Order, City of Daly City Regular City Council Meeting for today's Valentine's Day rendition, Monday, February 14, 2022, 7:00 PM. So pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, members of Daly City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the media via live stream through the City Council Meeting livestream at htpps-colon backslash backslash bit.ly-backslash dailycityfeb14livestream or on local channel 27. We all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. See here, order. Okay, can we, is Ms. City Clerk here today?
Yes, and that opponent is here.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you for attendance, Mr. Buena Ventura.
Yes, I'm here, but Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that I might have to drop out during the meeting. I'm not hospital attending for my dad, so I'm here for now. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present, thank you, Ms. City Clerk. Can I get a motion to, for approval of minutes for the regular meeting of January 24, 2022?
Motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of January 24, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion there, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so move on to the approval of agenda. We have, does anybody, any of my colleagues want to pull any agenda items from the consent agenda to discuss?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number nine, just for some transparency to the community around what will be kind of the mid-year budget adjustments.
The council member, Justin Manalo, wants agenda nine. Are there any other agenda items that would like to be pulled?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make a motion that we approve all items on the agenda with exception of number nine.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, great. Moving on to agenda item number nine, accepting fiscal year 2022 mid-year budget adjustments.
Good evening, Dr. Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and City Council members. It is recommended that the City Council approve fiscal year 2022 mid-year revenue and expenditure budget adjustments. Fiscal year 2022 operating and capital budgets were adopted by the City Council on May 24, 2021. The fiscal year 2022 mid-year budget review is an opportunity for staff to recommend budget adjustments to reflect changes in revenue and expenditure estimates based on performance through the first half of fiscal year 2022. After review of financial activity from July 1, 2021, through December 31, 2021, there are some identified needs for budget adjustments as summarized in Attachment A, and staff is recommending an increase in general fund budgeted revenue of $799,546 due to an increase in anticipated vehicle license fee and Measure Q sales tax revenue. The general fund expenditures are recommended to be increased by $143,919 for the reopening of recreation programs, reopening of the deli and other miscellaneous expenditures, as well as an increase of $1.75 million in inter-fund transfers for the streets maintenance subsidy and the signals and street lighting subsidies. Adjustments to revenue in other non-general fund budgets equate to approximately $4.56 million due to increases in anticipated gas tax revenue and inter-fund transfers. Other non-general fund city funds are requesting a $2.13 million increase to account for vehicle replacement costs, information services projects that were budgeted in fiscal year 2021 but not carried, and were not carried forward, as well as an increase in insurance premiums. There's also a total of $5.79 million in inter-fund transfers to account for funding source transfers for fiscal year 2022 CIP projects that were also approved on May 24, In summary, staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution to approve the recommended budget adjustments for fiscal year 2022, and staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council members. Thank you.
Mr. Nevin, I would like to open this up to my colleagues, let's go with Council Member Glenn Sylvester, then Council Member Pamela Di Giovanni, and then Council Member Justin Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nevin, thank you for the report. As I took a look at the packet, it is quite extensive, and I have two concerns. I'm hoping in the future that we can have more time to study the packet, that's my first comment. And the second is a question that I have, based upon information that you have provided, what's the bottom line? Because I didn't see much in the area other than a historical approach, but I would be looking for a variance. What's the difference in, from the approved budget, and what's the variance and what's the changes? So in light of that, my question is, what is the bottom line on expenditures and income coming in? Thank you.
If I could share the screen, I can maybe show Attachment A to this, this item. Okay, you should be good to go, Tim. Okay. Okay, so can everyone see my, my screen? So for this first page of, of two are the mid-year budget adjustments summarized for the general fund. So the first section in the top is the revenue, and there are two amounts that we're looking to increase. So it shows that the current amount, which is basically what the budget was, as brought to the council on May 24, 2021, and an adjusted increase in VLF of approximately almost $300,000. And additionally, in consultation with our sales tax consultant, we are also increasing the Measure Q estimated revenue from $7,320,000 to just over $7.5 million. Underneath the revenue are the outline of expenditures, and these are relatively small increases except for the $1.7 million down at the bottom for, these are general fund subsidies for streets maintenance and also for signals and street, street lighting subsidy. Those typically are not budgeted initially, but since we're, we have a good estimate of what those will be by year end, we're including those as a mid-year adjustment at this point. So that, that is the extent of the general fund. You could also see some Rio, some smaller increases for reopening recreation programs and the deli as well. We have a additional increase in TurboData parking permits and a small business license expense that was not previously budgeted. Moving on to the non-general fund, we also have some increases in revenue that we want to change the, the budget for, and that's mainly for gas tax on the top five lines. So we're increasing each of those gas tax revenues by these, these amounts. And the street maintenance and street signals, we saw those amounts on the first slide of the first page, and that, that's a general fund expense. This is a non-general fund revenue that comes into the, to subsidize those two programs. Looking down at the expenditures, we're looking at increasing some of these non-general fund expenditures, and of note, as I mentioned in the staff report, there is an insurance premium increase, just due to the, the city increasing, or I'm sorry, our insurance premiums were estimated to be 1.2 million six months ago, and now they're estimated to be closer to 1.6 million, so we wanted to increase the budget there. And other increases are just basically the general fund contribution to the CIP program that was budgeted and approved in May of 2021 as well. So those are the, those summarize all of the, these are all of the changes that we're making. Any other line item change would be reflected here, so these are 100% of the adjustments that we're asking for this evening.
Thank you so much. So the bottom line is, taking these two accounts into effect, expenditures and revenue, what's the bottom line?
So the net increase in the general fund budget is approximately $1 million net, and these other funds, non-general fund, it really, it really depends on the funds, but there's a net increase in those expenditures as well, based on the, again, the insurance premium increase and the transfers from the general fund to cover CIP expenditures as well. Those are the main increases in the non-general fund accounts.
So do we have a dollar amount? I'm still not getting a dollar amount. You know, I just want to find out if it's anticipated that we're spending more than what we're bringing in. Do we have, you know, I don't have a calculator in front of me.
These are the, for the non-general fund accounts, the net increase in expenditures, 3 million.
So 3 million, and 1 million was the net increase in revenue, so we are in the hole by 2 million.
We are, sorry, we're increasing, okay, if we're talking about the non-general fund, this page, we're talking about an increase in revenues of 4.5 million and an increase in expenditures of 7.9 million, so roughly $3.5 million increase for non-general fund.
Okay.
General fund, we're looking at an increase of approximately $800,000 in revenue and an increase in expenditures of 1.8 million or close to 1.9 million. And, and so the net is about a million dollars.
So total was 4.5 million for both funds?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
To Councilman Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, thank you, Mr. Nevin. I have a couple of quick questions. Could you go back to the, or I think it says something about TurboData parking permits? Could you, for the public, elaborate or tell us what this is? Is this outsourcing our parking permits? What is this?
This is Turbo, TurboData is our, is our processor for parking permits, and we're increasing slightly the, the expenditure for them. So it was originally budgeted at 329,600, and we need to increase it by $45,000 to 374,600.
And why, why do we have to increase that? I'm just curious.
I can, I can look up the exact, so this information, we go really department by department in terms of what the needs are, and if they, if they're needed increase, then they apply for a mid-year budget adjustment, and we, we add it here. I don't particularly know what the Turbo, you know, why the expenditures are slightly higher than what was originally budgeted, but what we do get is, that is just the payment we make for the processor. In terms of the parking permit revenue, we, we see that on the other side, but we did not have to adjust the, the revenue piece of that.
Okay, and is this something new that we're doing because of COVID, in particular, while we're outsourcing our parking permits?
It's not, we've had a contract with, with TurboData for years.
Okay, and then, thank you for that. And then the other thing is about the reopening of the recreation programs, which is great, you know, I'm full support of any of that. And I know that we did budget some, but of our Measure Q funds in the beginning, and I'm happy, is that just because we're expanding, which that's a good thing, if we're expanding more recreation programs, I'm off, I support all that. So is that why?
It is.
Listed?
It is. At the time of the budget in May 2021, we just didn't have all of the figures for the budget, and so we're, we're reflecting those now in the mid-year for those. We did budget most of what was going to be expended, but just not all of it.
Yeah, so for the public that, I want them to know that, that there was budgeted, but they, this is actually a good thing, because now we're getting the recreation programs back into, to the, for the community, which is fantastic, by the way, for the seniors and youth and everything, so that's, that's a good thing. I understand the deli opening, and then, so with the increase in the revenue and then for the non-general, and could you go to the, where it says the ERP consultant and clarify that for me, please? Mr. Nevin, thank you. At the non, yes.
Yes, so ERP consultant, ERP is electronic reporting, and it is basically the financial system that the city uses. So our contract ends, and what we're putting in here is additional funds so that we can, we can utilize an ERP consultant to identify different systems that the city could use, because the end of our current system is coming up this fiscal year. We did not anticipate needing the consultant when we, when we met in May of 2021, but we'd like to actively meet with the consultant and get, again, ideas of different programs that we could use for our financial system and our human resources system.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification, and I believe for myself, Mr. Mayor, I see the numbers here as, as Councilmember Sylvester had clarified, so thank you for the clarification. I know that you'll be doing a presentation, and this is just for the adjustments, correct, Mr. Nevin?
Yes, this is just for the adjustments. And also, next meeting, I plan on coming back to you with the city manager regarding talking about the budget and talking about the financial forecast and other items as well at our next meeting.
So currently, if we do see, like, it's, it looks like a little deficit, that currently may not be the whole picture here tonight. This is just the adjustments.
This is just the, correct, this is just the adjustments, and I will bring the full picture of the last few fiscal years, the current fiscal year, and what that looks like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nevin, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for providing the presentation, Director Nevin. I understand that this is a mid-year budget adjustments. I think it's important for our constituents and those watching to understand exactly what those pieces are, as sometimes they don't have access to these documents. Very comprehensive, I think that it's actually a good thing to see that we have more funds to be able to allocate to programs that our communities really, really utilize. And so I want to go back to the slide that talks about recreation, and I know that they are, you know, increases in those particular line items. I just wanted to understand what those two programs are, or those, those programs with the increased budget? Or actually, they're 1, 2, 3, 4? So what exact programs are they? And, and so that our community knows if, if someone can, if it's not you, Director Nevin, City Manager Maltby, in that regard.
I do know with, with regard to the, the deli reopening, that just was an item where we had a small amount that was originally budgeted, and then we're budgeting for, you know, staff to reopen the deli, which was not budgeted last May. Recreation programs, you could see some small increases, $44, 1,261, an increase of 23,000 and 6,000. I don't have a list of the actual programs, but again, we had budgeted 27,000 or so, 27,500, and just need to add to that based on what we know today in terms of reopening and what, how much money we'll need before the end of the fiscal year to spend on those programs.
And if I may. Understood, understood, yeah. If, if they're, you know, if the details are not at this level, because it's the mid-year adjustment, then I understand that. I just wanted to know if you, you had for, perchance, so that the community would understand exactly what those programs would benefit from the increase. So thank you very much.
If I may, Mayor and Councilmember Manalo, and thank you, Director Nevin, you've done a great job. You know, you know operations outside of finance, so that's awesome. These are largely due to operational costs, so that's why these, the reopening costs are relatively small. When you see large costs associated with programming, it's usually due to staffing. The council did approve for additional recreation staffing when we, when we passed Measure Q, and so that was largely for senior services program, programming and some youth programming, and senior services right now, I believe, we're in the process of hiring at least one person so that we can get some help to our coordinator right now, Ann Cooney, and expand programming, in hopes that we'll be together in person real soon, as I know our active adult, older adult population is, is, is really eager to meet in person. So hopefully that helps, and as Mr. Nevin said, we'll be back with you at the next meeting to have a more comprehensive look at the budget in general. So, good, great questions.
Thank you, City Manager Maltby for that. Yeah, I think that's wonderful to hear, that there'll be more support for our senior, seniors or, or older adult population, as we say, in that regard, and yeah, looking forward to see what lies ahead. So thank you both to Director Nevin and City Manager Maltby. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, everyone. I guess we, do we do a voice vote for this, Rose?
Yes, you can do a voice vote on this.
Okay.
A motion and a second.
Oh, yes, that's right. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Justin Manalo, can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion passes, and we're looking forward to the budget presentation, right just around the corner. Okay. So that's, and then, moving on to public hearings, Agenda 17, Public Hearing for General, General Vacation of Public Access Ingress and Egress easement along parking lot at 2171 Uno Pero Cerro Boulevard, and we'll, I'll pass it to Mr. Richard Chu, Director Chu, on this item.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm going to turn this over to our senior engineer, Roland Yip, for the presentation.
Thank you, Richard. I have the staff report for the public hearing for the general vacation of public access ingress and egress PAE along parking lot at 2171 Junibro Cerro Boulevard. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. In June last year, the planning commission.
Are you getting feedback? I'm hearing a lot of static. Is someone?
Is that better now?
I, there it goes.
Okay, great, thank you. June of last year, the planning commission approved the administrative design review permit to install gates at the 2171 Junibro Cerro Boulevard parking lot with the condition of approval that required the vacation of the PAE. In December last year, the planning commission determined the vacation was consistent, is consistent with the city's general plan. The city attorney found the vacation is necessary to allow for the installation of gates to prevent unauthorized parking. The easement was intended for public access between Westlake Avenue and Citrus Avenue. There is no longer a need for the easement, since the existing parking lot does not provide access to Westlake Avenue from Citrus Avenue. Currently, it only functions as a private parking lot for the existing office building. In the last meeting, the City Council set today's date and time for the public hearing for the general vacation of the PAE, and authorized staff to initiate the newspaper advertisement and posting notices per the Streets and Highways Code General Vacation Procedure. City staff has placed the advertisement in the examiner for January 30th and February 6th, and placed notices within the parking lot and along the frontage of the property on January 27th. Staff recommends the City Council conduct a public hearing for the general vacation of the public access ingress and egress easement along the parking lot at 2171 Junibro Cerro Boulevard, and approve the general vacation of the public access ingress and egress easement in accordance with the Streets and Highways Code General Vacation Procedures 8320-8325. Staff is available to answer any additional information desired by the mayor or city council members.
Thank you, Mr. Yip. I would like to open this up to my colleagues. Are there any questions or comments regarding this issue? Seeing none, I'd like to open a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing?
Yeah, a motion.
Second.
Second, all right. Is, are there any public comment on this issue?
So for members of the public who wish to comment on item number 17, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when you hear your name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted, and any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands for this particular item.
All right.
Motion to close the hearing.
There's a motion to close, can I get a second? A second by Pamela Di Giovanni, or Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Let's have a roll call, vote, Ms. City Clerk.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Moving on to communications, Agenda number 18 of authorizing the city to implement teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. I'll pass it over to City Attorney Rose Zimmerman and Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The recommended action before you is to adopt a resolution authorizing the continued remote teleconference public meetings by the City Council pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 for an additional 30 days. Just by way of background, as the council is well aware, because of COVID, the COVID pandemic, the City Council and the City of Daly City have been meeting remotely pursuant to the governor's order. The governor did issue the executive order with authorizes to continue teleconference public meetings upon resolution of the City Council. The recommended action before you is to adopt the resolution to. The recommended action before you is to adopt the resolution to the continued remote teleconference meetings pursuant to AB three sixty-one. For points of discussion and just way of background, the council is aware that the current public health orders are evolving. In particular, with the County of San Mateo and Ten Bay Area, health officers um have issued orders to lift the universal mask requirements for most indoor public settings effective this Wednesday, February sixteen. Given the downward trend of the Omicron surge, the vaccination rates and public health orders, the staff will be seeking direction and feedback from the City Council on the return to in-person public meetings at the City Council at the next council meeting extended on March, by by March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Staff does recommend that we adopt the resolution um and is open for any questions or feedback for the City Council. And we are here available for any um questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Senior Attorney. If I may just interject for one second, I'm gonna turn it over to Stephen. Maybe you wanna elaborate a little bit. You wrote the staff report about options that the council may wanna consider at this point. Same same boat that the other cities are in, trying to determine whether or not we wanna continue doing remote meetings versus coming back into person.
Sure, thank you. Um you know, given the fact that public health orders are changing now and the first change to be made is the masking requirements for indoor public settings, we did want to have at least a high-level discussion with you tonight um to gather feedback on our eventual return to in-person City Council meetings. Um and you know, I I do wanna let you know, we are working to make sure that the chambers is up to speed for that. You know, there is plexiglass dividers installed already and we would have other safety precautions um that, you know, you feel would be necessary to welcome the public back to City Hall. So if there is any feedback tonight for us that we can run with um over the next thirty days, that would be really helpful. Uh at the March fourteenth meeting, we will still bring this thirty-day resolution back to you for the teleconference meeting so we can continue that another thirty days at that time as well or not. Um but we just wanna just ga- gauge your your feelings tonight on um in-person meetings.
Right, thank you, Mrs. Stolti. I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, uh Mayor. I have basically two questions. I believe uh it's been answered, the first one and if we have the equipment in place. And I'm hearing about glass dividers. I'm also wonder- wondering about the virtual option. And this is the second part of my question, and whether the uh particular council members can choose an option to be in-person or virtual. Would that be possible? Because I understand when you don't attend the council meeting, like say if you're out of town, you have to get a notice posted uh in a public place. And uh would that still apply?
So for the equipment in in place, yes, we do have the plexiglass and that is fine, that's been finalized for a while. I will have to defer to our city attorney a little bit on the second part. I I do believe that if we don't go the option of adopting that resolution for thirty-day teleconference meetings, there might be some ones there that, uh Rose, I don't know if you wanna touch it.
So, yes, I can clarify that. Basically, the order is evolving. And the way it stands right now, it has, by adopting the resolution, you do relax the requirements of the Brown Act that requires you to have noticing for teleconferencing. So the question, Councilmember Sylvester, in regards to whether or not you can have that option, remains to be seen. I think if you do not adopt it, then the current Brown Act orders would remain in place and then you would need to do the normal teleconferencing if if the council were to all be in person. Then, and if some chose to not be in person, then we would need to comply with the Brown Act rules. But this is evolving and as as uh Mr. Stolti did indicate, we that remains to be seen because again, health orders are just starting to lift right now. So I would imagine that some of those rules for remote teleconferencing and protocols for health would change in the next thirty days as well.
Well, thank you. That answers uh uh my question, especially in the area of teleconferencing. And I do understand that this remains constant and fluid. So uh got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just to clarify, Rose, right, that we're just gonna bring this back. Everything's remains the same if we approve this tonight and then we just move forward. And because this thing is, like you said, evolving, so we don't really know what's gonna happen in the next thirty days. Is that correct?
That is correct. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, uh Mr. Stolti. And uh so thank you both. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um Vice Mayor Ray Benintura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I had a question regarding, I understand that the mask mandate is gonna be lifted, but what is the um uh the status of the social distancing aspect of the the COVID protocols? Is that also being listed or is it still the recommendation to keep a certain distance?
I believe this first change is only for masking requirements.
Okay. And then so my other question then would be as far as the uh the members of the public who are able to come to the council chambers, has there been any discussion on, is there a need to limit that number? Are we going to um have social distancing there or is it just gonna be business as usual?
We we could actually do it either way. Um currently, this mask, uh the relaxation of mask rules still allows businesses or us to enforce our own safety pro- protocols. We could still require people to wear masks, for example, if they wanted to enter City Hall. So that's still up to us. Um in terms of protocols for council chambers with social distancing, that's something we've thought through. Um and we could certainly implement that as well. I do believe those rules will be relaxed over time. Um and it, so that that's something we could certainly implement.
And then um is the uh the barrier that extends the council uh room, is that gonna be uh open? Or are we gonna have it still sort of enclosed? And um are the doors to the exits uh sort of, are they also gonna be open so that we can keep the circulation? Or is it gonna be business as usual as well?
We had thought about keeping the big dividing doors to City Hall from chambers open and we could keep the exit doors open too. That's not a problem.
Okay. And then do you know if other cities are doing something about a hybrid model uh where some uh officials are appearing by Zoom and then others are uh appearing in person? What do you know of the practice and other jurisdictions about that?
In terms of council members themselves doing a hybrid approach, I'm actually not sure what other cities are doing about that. I have not seen that question come up yet. Um but the concept of hybrid meetings is definitely being discussed. So that that is another thing we should really discuss as well.
And then my final question is, um you know, I I think the 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 need to go on Zoom has, yeah, in a way opened up the public's act that access to uh uh participation in the council meeting. So I'm wondering if even if we come back to a situation where we're in person, uh I I think we should still allow the public to appear uh by Zoom because it is, it really is more convenient and it it is their forum. And I'm all for as much access to them as possible. I'm not sure how we can set that up, but I know that the last time we were in chambers, there were some really nice screens that were installed. So um I I'd like to see uh some some access to the public, chances letting them continue, continue to participate by Zoom. Thank you.
I do wanna let you know, we are currently researching those types of options. Um right now, the the one option that seems like it could really work in council chambers that would require new equipment to be installed is a a call-in option for people from home. But we're still looking into that. And um also, our Human Resources Department is currently surveying other agencies on the peninsula about what they are doing. So we'll have more responses to that survey soon. So we're we're still in research mode on a lot of this.
I did have one uh final question, Mr. Mayor. So um the two platforms that I've I've experienced with because of COVID is Zoom and Microsoft Teams. And um I'm just wondering how this is working in terms of of Zoom. Is it the better platform? But I and then I wonder why are so many others using Teams instead? Maybe that's a better way to go. And then I also heard about another one called Blue Gene. Um so I'm just putting it out there because I I I've used all three of them and I'm, I I want the city to, uh you know, invest and do the best one that's uh available for our our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ray Benintura. Um Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh you know, I I think um this being proposed is hopefully a good sign of where we're at. I mean, it's indefinitely um a journey through um COVID, right? And so, I mean, seeing that um there are some uh restrictions being lifted, we still don't know what what comes around the bend. But I appreciate staff really taking the time to research um so that we are ahead of this if we were to move in person. I think um understanding if we're also going to have any um like extra filtration systems in the chambers. Um if that's something is being researched, I understand that, you know, the large wall will be open, which is great. But wondering if we're even gonna uh put those types of devices within um the chambers when we have um public in i- inside. Uh another piece is, I do think that we need to provide access to folks that um are unable to come to the meetings. Um you know, we've heard that sometimes there are families that have children and it's hard for them to get to the chambers and that, you know, their their kids have uh, you know, to get ready, do homework and et cetera. And so I think the option of even having a call-in um is is something we should pursue. I mean, and that is hybrid. I feel like that accessibility is very important. And and you know, that would be a service to our public. And so I'm in concurrence with uh Councilmember Benintura in that regard as well. So um any other questions? Uh well, I understand that, you know, we're actually voting on this this evening and then uh we'll have another discussion within a month to see kind of where everything lies. But from what I see around data and even up and down California, there has been a a decrease in hospitalizations and there's really been um a decline. So that's that's a good thing, right? It's it's not spreading uh ever more rapidly. It's just um now hopefully we're seeing um the decline of the Omicron. So thank you uh to all the staff, uh to Stephen and Shauna for working on this. We look forward to kind of hearing um what else um you research um and bring to the table. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um okay, so um let's go ahead and um have a motion to ado- adopt the re- resolution. Can I get a motion? A mo- a motion by Councilmember Justin Manalo. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Like, second by, was that Vice Mayor Ray Ben- my Ray Benintura? Okay. Miss City Clerk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you vote?
Um you were were um adopted a resolution by roll call?
Thank you. Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. So um motion passes. Uh thank you to everybody on staff. And I'm hoping to come back into person safely and, you know, with ever-evolving technology. I think we can be super creative in terms of be having um inclusive um city council meetings. Okay, so moving on to agenda number nineteen, Housing Element, um sixth cycle update, overview of Daly City's region housing, regional housing needs allocation, RENA. So I'll hand it over to Michael Van Lockhuisen for this report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mi- members of the City Council. This is a communication item to you about the sixth cycle housing element. Uh the city staff, Funding Division specifically, has begun preparation of the housing element that covers the period between twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty-one. Those of you um who were around may recall the previous housing element began in twenty fifteen and ends in twenty twenty-two. And so uh approximately every eight years, the city needs to prepare a new housing element. And tonight, we're specifically going to discuss the regional housing need allocation. Uh the staff thought it would be a good time to bring the council up to speed on what the city's RENA is. RENA is the acronym, of course, for Regional Housing Need Allocation. And um yeah, just go over some sites that we're looking at toward meeting the RENA. So our presentation will describe what the RENA is and how it came to be and um how we're going to deal with it, so to speak. Um the city, of course, has a general plan, just like every city in California. And there are mandated elements of the general plan. And one of those is the housing element. Of all of the elements, only the housing element needs to be updated on a fairly regular basis. Um the general plan's intended to be a long-term document. It usually has a shelf life of about twenty years. Some cities do that more frequently. Most do, most do general plan updates less frequently than twenty years. But the housing element, the state of California tells cities that you you need to update this regularly. And it used to be five years and for most cities, it is now eight years. And so it has been eight years and um the housing element is different from other general plan elements and that there's significant implications to all of the other elements, um including the land use element in particular because uh the city needs to essentially provide for zoned land for the creation of housing. It is the state's way of making sure that all of the uh cities in California are uh again providing a um land and just having zoned everything, you know, very low density so that no one can move in. Um this is a state mandate so that that can happen. So it's sort of an inclusionary sort of a regulation that's imposed by the state on cities. And again, must be updated every eight years. Subject to state oversight, the city submits the uh housing element that it prepares to the State HCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. And there are several rounds back and forth and ultimately they approve it. Um I didn't make a slide on this, um but if the housing element isn't approved, the city could not, could find itself not qualified for grants, road improvements, things like this. So there's actually some teeth to needing to have a certified housing on. The um housing element has uh several different components. And tonight, we're looking again at the regional housing need assessment. And and that is the RENA for short. And I'm gonna get into what that is. Uh the RENA is a, this is right out of the A-BAG's language. The RENA is a process that identifies the total number of housing units separated into four affordability levels that every local government in the Bay Area must plan to accommodate for the period from twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. The primary role of the RENA methodology is to encourage a pattern of housing growth for the Bay Area that meets the needs of all residents. And the shorthand for that uh is essentially that the city needs to provide land, private land or public land that allows for housing construction. And the state tells the uh city through A-BAG how many units that's gonna be. So the process for determining the allocation is essentially four things. The state uh sets a regional uh goal for housing. There's one for the Bay Area, there's one in Southern California, there's one in the Central Valley. And in the Bay Area, of course, we have A-BAG. And it allocates the total number of housing units. There's statisticians. There's statisticians that work at HCD at the state and they work with A-BAG to determine the number of housing units that they think need to be constructed in this eight-year time period. And that trickles down to local jurisdictions such as Daly City. And the local jurisdictions through their housing element use the zoning powers that we have to make sure that the housing and land use elements essentially provide a list of sites that can meet all of the regional housing need allocation. So specifically, the arena is essentially a number of housing units, just like the previous slide described. And there's a process for getting that number down from the state or from the state down to the city, such as the city of Daly City. Put together a quick slide about what was going to be new in this round. One of the biggest things that's new is there's a much, the arena in the last, or the current arena is approximately 1,400 units, 1,300 and some change. They're all the way up to 4,800 units in the new arena. And the reason for that is there's a higher total of regional housing need. The state has determined that where it used to be, they would say, oh, this is how many housing units you need to accommodate anticipated growth. They're actually looking backward and saying there's an existing unmet need and you also need to accommodate that. And it's no secret that we're way behind in housing production almost throughout the Bay Area. And especially in, you know, the more San Mateo County type coastal counties, there's just not enough housing. And so we're behind and the state is saying, well, you need to play some catch up. So we have 4,800, what you'll see in a second, we have a slide on it, 4,800 and some change arena. HCD must consider overcrowded households, cost burdened households. And so there's some accounting for that. There is also the need to affirmatively further fair housing. This is an anti-discrimination measure and cities need to show that we have done that as well. So we're participating in a group that affirmatively further start housing and develops policies towards doing that. And then lastly, identifying housing element for sites for affordable units will be more challenging. And one of the reasons why is that the state in the past has just sort of believed cities that affordable housing could be built on certain particular sites. And now they're wanting some evidence, so to speak, for that. And the way we come up with our regional housing need allocation list is going to be just a little bit more tedious. That's nothing the city council necessarily needs to worry about. In the long run, of course, you do. But the city staff comes up with that list and will present it to you when the time comes for that. And this slide just shows the income categories when we talk about what very low, low, moderate and above moderate income are. Some of the council members prior are already familiar with these numbers, having participated in some of the affordable housing discussions we've had. We can come back to the slide if you need to. So this is the regional housing need allocation for all of the cities in San Mateo County. Of course, we're dealing just with the city of Daly City. And so our arena, we put this, put all the cities up so that everybody, we could see what everybody had. Just real quick, we can spend a minute or so on this. But our allocation, you can see my pointer, is a 4,838. The allocation identifies the income categories, though, that we have to provide zone land for. So it's not just that you get to, that you have to provide zone land for 4,800 units. We also have to have policies in place that promote construction at affordability levels. And of course, our Affordable Housing Ordinance does that. And so it, that ordinance, you know, requires a certain percentage. And the state, however, does assume that with density comes affordability. So we try and provide sites that can provide over 30 dwelling units to the acre. The state assumes that all of those units will be affordable if you're 30 units to the acre. Unless it's an approved product, the site has an approved project on it, then we have to use the affordability that is deed restricted. So, and I know that's kind of complicated, but that's, that's sort of the gymnastics, so to speak, that we go through when we come up with the site list. So this is the regional housing need allocation for the entire county. Daly City, more specifically, I'm just looking at the numbers bigger, 4,838. And we have a very high, what's, 20% of our number is very low income. That's a hard target to meet. Writing units at a very low income range. Most developers, of course, want to build just above, they only want to build above moderate. We have an Affordable Housing Ordinance that requires, of course, 10 and 20% for rental and ownership housing. And that only goes so far, of course. We also have done state density bonus law that helps us out somewhat. But some of these numbers are going to be a challenge to meet. And that is the reason that we're sharing this with you. It's something that the staff, of course, works on, but we wanted to share that with you. Was there a question? Okay. So there's, if the, if the city doesn't have enough sites, we have an adequate sites program and we'll need to rezone sites. I won't get too far into the slide. But essentially, we need to make sure that all of our shortfall is met by our rezoning program. And in the last round, we rezoned a number of properties around town. Usually, the property owners don't have an issue with it because we're saying they can build more on their property. And they're just sitting there with a piece of, you know, land. Well, that's a good thing to them, usually. And so that is what the adequate sites program is. We will have to rezone if necessary. So getting into our preliminary site list, sites that make the list or sites that are in the process are being made available for residential uses via rezoning. They can be vacant and zoned for residential uses. Sites that are vacant can also be identified at toward meeting the arena. But there has to be some sort of evidence that the property owner has shown interest in developing the property. So if you've got a, you know, an auto repair garage and the city, in order to place it in the arena, has to show that the owner of the land thinks that the auto repair garage, just use an example, is no longer their highest investment use. And they've submitted some sort of an application to the city or even a letter or something that says that they intend to redevelop that property, then we can add it to our list. And then projects that have been approved are also projects that can make the list. So this is what our site list looks like right now. The image on your screen was provided to you as an attachment to the staff report with a little more information. But of course, for the presentation, it kind of boiled it down. We have, I believe, 35 properties right now on our site list, and these are their addresses. And we've prepared just slides to show some of the, you know, bigger ones or the ones that will help us meet our arena. But this is our essentially our site list, and we'll be distilling this in the coming months and working with our city of Daly City, like all of the cities in San Mateo County and the unincorporated county of San Mateo. Participate in a group called 21 Elements. They're very helpful with providing housing element preparation support. We've joined on with them to do that and we'll be working with them to further refine this list. And again, do the gymnastics as I described of what site fits in where and how can it meet this income category? Because at the end of the day, we have to submit that to the state and we need to hit a number that is 4,800 and some change. And as you can see at the bottom of the screen, we're at 37. So we need to, we need to come up with approximately 1,100 more units somewhere in the city. And we'll do some of that with accessory dwelling units. Our production of accessory dwelling units peaked a few years ago at 80 and it's gone down a little to, I think we did 65 or so last year. But there's a formula for anticipating how many ADUs. I assume everyone's familiar with one of those, what that is. The second unit, it's another unit, the basement usually is what it is, with the kitchen. And we call those ADUs. Anyway, we will get to use those over eight years if we build 70 units a year. And we can convince the state that that's going to happen and there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to do that. We'll have another, I'm just doing some quick math, you know, 550 units, maybe, maybe 600 there. So that'll get us to 37 plus 600, 4,300. So, you know, maybe, you know, we're 500 short at this point. So this is, you know, what we'll have to, we'll have to come up with that. It's doable, though. It's just, we're gonna just need to be creative about that. We have something called SB9 that allows duplexes and lot splits. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but there's actually, you know, a learning curve on our part of what exactly it entails. But essentially, single-family zoning, and this isn't something we're making up, the headlines and the, you know, SF Gate will tell you. LA Times, single-family and zoning in Cali, single-family zoning in California has sort of been done away with. Property owners have a right to build an ADU. They also have a right to build a duplex under SB9 on their property if they want to. And the 21 Elements Group is trying to work with the state to try and come up with some assumptions for how many SB9 units that we can anticipate. Of course, it's a new piece of legislation, so we don't know what the factor will be in SB9 unit creation. But anyway, that's another one that's out there. There's also affordability that's assumed with ADUs. And I believe the allocation is 30%, 30% for very low and low. So that's good. So that'll, that'll help us meet some of our affordability numbers, which is totally true. A lot of the affordable units that are being created in Daly City today are the ADUs. We have had a very robust ADU program since the early 80s and it continues to this day. So we're very, we're doing well in the ADU department. So anyway, that's just sort of how the site list works in our meeting arena. We did want to come up with some of our, just get into a discussion about some of our larger sites. And one of the sites that's on the list and it's received preliminary plan approval is the Ceremony Del Rey project. It's 1,150 units, I'm sure you all know, on an 18-acre site. And it has some density associated with it. And if the site was to receive approval by the city council, of course, the city staff's gonna put it on the arena. It's, you know, just doing some, you know, very quick math, you know, 4,800 units, 1,150. I mean, that's gonna knock out 22, 23% of the arena. So it's an important one. And so we wanted to mention that one. 45 Midway Drive, Midway Military Development. Of course, you all know what that is in the Bay Shore neighborhood, 555 units. All of those units should be considered affordable by HCD. I think we're gonna have to figure out what the allocation is between very low, low and medium. But that's another one. Again, over 30 dwelling units to the acre. So we have assumed affordability and real affordability. So that's a good one. Ceremony Views, some of you may be familiar with, approved in 2017 at 81 dwellings to the acre, 323 units. And there are 42 affordable units that were required as a piece of density bonus, as well as through the Affordable Housing Ordinance on that. We haven't seen any activity on this site in a while in terms of property owners indicating to us the project was made forward. It doesn't matter, however, the city council changed the zoning to allow 324 units and we get to add it to our arena. And so that's a, that's a good one. One Carter Street is Point Martin. I don't know if the last time you were in the Bay Shore neighborhood, but you'll start to see construction of a 100. And this is a typo, excuse me. It's 133, not 323. 113 units on the Point Martin site, single-family detached housing. And we will get probably 10 affordable units out of that. So not a lot, but I think that project has some affordable units and cash coming to the city as an in lieu payment that was negotiated quite some time ago, but still present in terms of its current development scheme. 99 Southgate Avenue, this project has not come to the Planning Commission City Council yet. It's under the project review. So it's a current project under review. And it's 214 units at the Burlington Coat Factory. I think everybody knows where that is, sort of across the street from Home Depot there. And again, pretty dense site on a two-acre site, 214 units. So we will get some affordability out of that as well. So that's the Burlington site. 2321 Geneva, also an incomplete project that we're working on, the applicant for completeness. But we do get to add it to our arena because, like I said, we get to add any site that a developer tells us they're interested in developing. This property is in between Castillo and Pasadena on Geneva Avenue. The, just to warn everybody, there's an intersection of Carter and Geneva Avenue right nearby and the city limit with San Francisco running partially through the site. This is, however, all within Daly City's jurisdiction, 194 units on a high-facker site. We think that we'll get quite a bit of affordability out of the site through state density bonus, as well as its density. Because it's dense, we will have assumed affordability here. So this is a good one. Hopefully, we'll continue through the process. It's a, it's a good little project. We'll see what happens with it. But we do get to add it to our arena. So that's what's most important there. Quite some, I don't know, quite some time ago, but I think in, like, five years ago or so. Kimco also on the Westlake Shopping Center site received approval from the city council to construct 179-unit mixed-use building. And we do anticipate some affordability here. It's a little bit more of a question mark, how many units we'll get out of this in terms of affordability. Project seems to have stalled, but we still do get to count it. It's provided for in zoning and it could come back. And hopefully it does. It's actually quite a nice project. And yeah, so there's, there's that one. 493 Eastmore, this is at the intersection of Sullivan and Eastmore, the northwest corner. It's the core affordable housing project. It's already approved, 72 units on 0.37 acre site, almost 200 units to the acre. And we do think we'll have credit for all of the 72 units being affordable. So I think that might have been the last site we decided to share. There's, again, there's like 35 or 36 sites. We just don't have the time to go through all of them. We wanted to show you the, you know, the bigger ones and the ones that we thought were the most realistic and provided, you know, you know, took a decent chunk out of our arena. And those are the ones that we showed you. Oh, 305 Eastmore, I guess there is one more. Excuse me. This is J E S D, Snap Housing, under construction now, I believe, on Eastmore Avenue. And 56 unit apartment project, we get six affordable units out of it. So there's that one, too. Next steps. So tonight's just sort of an introduction to the housing element. We just started with a discussion of the regional housing need allocation. We've done some public, some very initial public outreach about a year ago. 21 Elements engaged with all of the residents in San Mateo County and then Daly City specifically, just as an initial thing. So there's been some outreach, but we're gonna probably kind of do our own public outreach effort. And we're thinking of doing something in March or April where we kind of give the same presentation we gave tonight. The idea of that is just to, you know, get the community involved with developing, you know, any housing element goals, policies and programs that, you know, they think might be something that is effective in us meeting, reaching our required regional housing need allocation. Or just giving us ideas for what housing policies may be beneficial to the community in general. So, and that's the purpose of having a public outreach campaign. We need to put that together and have that. It'll probably be virtual. It seems like that's providing decent access at this point. So that's what we're thinking. After we receive that and actually ongoing, we will be drafting goals, policies and programs for inclusion in the housing element. And we'll put it into a document that has all kinds of statistics and about housing affordability in Daly City. Population statistics, there's a whole section on that. There's the arena. And then there's, there's a whole section on what policies the city will look into. Um, look into, um, one of the big ones in the last cycle that we haven't implemented yet was incentives for consolidating. Parcels in particular on Mission Street, Geneva Avenue. And I think the reason we really haven't moved forward with that is that. Um, you know, we, especially with the, uh, COVID situation, uh, you know, upon us, uh. We didn't think that, uh, giving fee waivers at this point at a time when, um, construction was sort of waning. Was a good idea. So we really haven't moved forward with that. And I don't know that we'll do it in the new element, um, continue that concept. Um, it's, it's, it's something that's, um, sort of, uh, you know, it's. It, it actually, the, the, the money that we don't collect these, of course, comes out of the public pocket and, um. It's kind of an, you know, it, it, we've really got to make sure we're, can afford something like that. We probably though will be focusing on, uh, things like parking reduction. That's something that, um, is a hard one for the community. Developers are always complaining about the cost of parking. Um, and it's true, um, you know, our neighbor to the north, uh, just doesn't, doesn't seem like they require parking. And so we hear all about that, you know, why do we? And, you know, they've got a, um, you know, um, different transportation system up there and that's kind of our stock answer, but it is something that we do need to look at. And, um, provide, providing parking reductions is something that the state has itself made a priority through. Some of the, um, assembly bills that, and in fact, the city councils approved a couple of projects, including the, uh, seventy two unit core project. That due to their proximity to bar. Were allowed to provide fewer parking spaces than the zoning ordinance required. So we may be proposing some changes to parking and, um. Um, you know, we can anticipate possible controversy from that, you know, the neighbors. The Mission Street may, you know, not be too crazy about that. It's something that the city council, of course, will have to weigh. So, um, that is one of the things that we are looking at doing. And the last steps associated with the housing, uh, housing element are of course having you adopt it, the city council and having the state of California accept it. And it's actually, that's the reverse order. We, we get your approval and then we set it, submitted to them for state certification. They might send it back. We may have to bring it back to you. There's a little back and forth that sometimes happens, but, um, essentially we have to do that in twenty twenty three. So. Those are the next steps. And if there's any questions, uh, uh, council may have or of course. Here to answer them if we can, so.
Thank you so much, Michael. Um, let's go with, uh, council member Justin Manalo. Followed by council member Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you very much for, uh, that presentation and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think that, um, my, my first question earlier, uh, during the presentation was trying to understand where our gap lie. Uh, where we're at and where our gap lies. And, um, you were further down the presentation and you definitely, um. Shared with us where, uh, we need to be in, what, where we're lacking in regards to kind of the new requirements. And, um, and the pathway towards, um, ensuring we have arena numbers. I think one point I want to make is that, um, you know, it's always been, um, you know, my support to have. Uh, a diversified kind of, um, kind of strata of, um. Whether it's below market rate units, affordable housing to have different, uh, area median incomes. Um, because of the fact that as I see the slide, um, and if you could go on there, um, uh, Michael, that talks about the. Requirements now in regards to, um, the very low, low, moderate, above moderate kind of, yeah, those pieces. So. I'd like to also, I mean, I know we're talking about the arena numbers right now. But I'd like to propose to look at our below market rate ordinance. I, I believe we're due. And, and looking at, um. That on an annual basis as well, just to be able, I mean, look, if we're looking at the numbers that we need, we should also look at the policies that we have. And, uh, potentially see where we could, uh, align, um, and kind of meet these goals. Obviously with, uh, research and, um, but I just remember us, um, you know, saying, hey, you know, what, this is. Where we're at around, um, looking at the. Percentages that we would require. Um, and that was probably in twenty eighteen or so. Uh, so now I think we're at twenty twenty two. Um, I, I'd like to see if we could revisit some of our, uh, BMR policies, both in. Um, the. Rental and ownership aspect of things. Moving forward. So that's just my comment. I think, you know, this is in alignment with, um, figuring out. How we reach our goals, um, in the future and also with also, uh, looking at the different AMI levels. Um, and also aligning it here, right? As well as finding out what our community needs are. I understand this is kind of the regional housing need allocation, but. Also always assessing the needs of our community within Daly City. So, um, I look forward to your outreach, um, Michael, that you're gonna have, um, in regards, uh, to this. I was just wondering, I know you said it's, it was going to be virtual. Um, I'd love to hear where, um, the outreach would be, um, if, um. Where and how, um, I know you'll be presenting that, but I'll provide feedback there, but I think we should do a very extensive outreach to. Um, whether it's just the, where people shop, where people go to school, um, uh, churches. I'm just throwing out kind of my outreach. Uh, hat here, uh, but really, uh, be able to have, um, an extensive list that we reach everyone, um, around understanding the needs of our community on the ground. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And if any of the council members have lists or have recommendations of who we should be. Notifying of this, of course, we're gonna use social media, um, you know, to a large extent, but please do. Uh, send, uh, the names or emails, uh, email addresses of those people to me. We'll make sure they get notified.
Thank you. Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, Mike, a few questions I have for you here. Matter of fact, you can, we'll start off by keeping the slide up that you have on your screen right now. So it's my understanding that we are counting the units, but you have the various categories of units. But the mere fact is living units. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got you. Which leads me to the question on your other slide where you show six ninety nine Ceramati Boulevard. It's listed twice. Is it because, uh, I, and I'm guessing it's, uh, perhaps a moderate and maybe low income?
It's listed twice because there is the, uh, staff housing that's currently under construction. That's the one twenty two.
Okay.
And then there's the eleven fifty. That is the project the city council issued preliminary plan approval for last month.
Got you. Thank you very much. And by your very words, there's a, uh, category that we may have trouble. Reaching, and I believe that was the very low. We may have trouble. So is there anything in the audience? Oh, I'm sorry, anything in the ordinance? I know, uh, for rental, it's ten percent and for, uh, um, ownership is ten percent. We as a council, can we disapprove? With reason? If a developer comes and gives us the minimum as per the ordinance of ten percent, can we say, no, we want twenty percent?
That's probably more of a question for Rose, honestly. Um, I mean, if somebody's meeting the city's ordinances, it's, uh, a, a, a bit of a challenge sometimes to use that as a reason. But I would defer to her. A lot of the way that the very low and low. Allocation will be met are projects that. Will identify zone land, but there won't be an approved project. And we get to throw all of the units that are in that. If, if they're over thirty units to the acre, we have a vacant piece of property. And there's no approval and there's two hundred units that are potentially can be there. We get to use all of those as affordable. If it's over thirty units to the acre, we get to put them all on affordable. So it's this sort of, uh. It's a, I don't know what the proper way to, you know, how to put it, but there's a lot of manipulation of the numbers a little to trying. Get this site to meet the very low. And of course, if the city comes back and approves something different on that property, we've got to redo the list. So, um, there's this sort of a, you know, a, a, a thing that happens with, with the, with the list. And I guess the reason I'm saying this is it's got not so much to do with the Affordable Housing Ordinance as it has to do with the state of California cares about. Is that they, they assume that projects that are over thirty dwellings to the acre have, uh, are affordable. Uh, they have affordability component in them and, um. For whatever reason they have, that's, that's the way that we meet some of the, that's the way we did it last time. Is by, we get to throw all that and the number of that project into the very low and low. So. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but.
I think you are, but, uh, I always feel six and a half of one or a dozen of the other. In regards to the affordability housing ordinance that's currently in effect and whether we can negotiate additional units. Uh, but at the same vein, some of these developers and, uh, you should, and, and you know who I'm speaking about. Tout the sense that, well, by us doing this, we're helping you meet your arena numbers. Well, yeah, okay. Well, you're helping us reach our arena numbers, but in what degree, the very low or the low? So that's a concern that I have. And I'm, uh, familiar with, uh, density bonus so that they can get tax credits and et cetera in regards to financing, but that's a whole different story. Okay. Um, ceremony views, even though it has been placed on the books. There is no movement at this particular time and we don't know if there's going to be movement because, uh, who knows? The property may go up for sale because of, um, no investors and subsequently, uh, y- y- you know, I. I think by placing it on our books, it's entitled and there may be set up for sale as entitled, but. Uh, we don't have a crystal ball and if we did, uh, we'd be in much better shape to, uh, understand exactly. But thank you for the update on that. I, uh, it's good to know that, uh, it's entitled and ready to go. So, uh, that's all I have at this time and I thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Michael, for the great presentation. It gives a clearer look at this. Picture that we all have to envelop instead of just hearing pieces and what have you. My question is. Similar to the, the, the prior, my colleagues, but a little bit, maybe a little bit different. Um, it's not guided by policy, but when we say our ten, back to the ten percent again, it still always sounds pretty low. And then when people say that, I know that we can not ask by law because we, all we did was adopt the state law. In our policy, which was that ten percent for the rental and twenty percent of, um, it's twenty percent for the, for. I think for sale, right? Is that correct, Michael? Twenty percent?
My understanding.
So, but even if we did that, and when you say the word affordable and we're saying affordable to a developer. They only go according to BMR. Is that correct? As soon as you say the word affordable. So what criteria is it that when they say, oh, but we're doing ten percent affordable? So is the state saying the word affordable only, are they looking at that definition only as just BMR? When somebody comes to us?
Uh, one of, uh.
Below market rate?
If there's a piece of, uh, vacant land, just, let's just use, uh, five point five Ceramati Boulevard, for example, that site right now is zoned for three hundred and twenty three units. Um, it, it, it achieved that through density bonus and yeah, but it's zoned for three twenty three. If a developer was to come to us and, um. Propose a project that was subject to our affordable housing ordinance, let's just say that it was a for sale. Project, that would be sixty four units that we would require be affordable. Then the state would consider those sixty four as meeting our, in whichever income category they fell into as meeting, that, that's what would go toward the arena. Right now, because of density, it's gonna be our suggestion that all of the three twenty three, because it. The project's approved, but its subdivision map has expired. So. The, at least I, I think it has. I'm pretty sure it has. And, uh, so we, so we, right now, we just have a zone piece of property that's over. Thirty dwelling units to the acre. So. The city of Daly City will suggest to the state of California that. All of those three twenty three get to get used for the very low and low income categories.
Okay.
Because we have a piece of zoned land that no longer has an approved project on it. So that's the sort of, you know, like I was saying, the, you know, the gymnastics that we go through with this list to try and meet state law without having to. Come to you folks and, you know, having to rezone half the city for, you know, this and that. So. Um, our goal is to, you know, meet the, meet the number, but do it, you know, in a reasonable fashion and, but. By looking at sites like in the way that I just explained to you is how we do that.
Okay. So, yeah, so, yeah, because my, my thought is when the developer comes, um, since I'm not on the ad hoc committee of the affordable. But when they, when they come for the, the housing, they're, they mostly seem like they're looking for just BMR. They don't really necessarily, other than the gentleman that the Eastmore thing that I'm really familiar with, that was a great project. As well, when I was on the planning commission, uh, that gentleman, because he took advantage of the, um, density bonus. Um, in that, that legislation to make most of it, yeah, below BMR, low income and I think middle income. So the ten percent, if we say ten percent, do, are we able to guide and tell, say, under that ten percent, even if it's only ten percent? Which I, hopefully we can work as a council and make it more in a policy. Can we say, out of that ten percent, we want X number? Of low, X number of medium? Are we, uh, uh, as a council able to guide at least that ten percent part or if they?
Ideally, you'd have an ordinance that stated that.
Okay. The ordinance specifies the levels of affordability and the total quantity of affordability. In the case of the four ninety three Eastmore and a lot of the other projects that are a hundred percent affordable, they're relying on tax credits. And to qualify for tax credits, they typically go to a deeper level of affordability than what our ordinance would require. Um, so when we have the developers that are proposing a hundred percent affordable development, they're almost their own animal. Our affordable housing ordinance is really affecting the developers that are developing to make a profit, to make money. And so it, it is a bit of a trick because the state would also recognize that if our. Inclusionary ordinance was too stringent, required too many affordable units and too deep affordability. They would say we were actually obstructing housing production because we're affecting the market such that market rate developers wouldn't want to build.
Yeah.
So it's a fine line that we have to walk. If we require too much affordability. And it forces the market to not want to engage in development in this city, then we would not be meeting. Our housing goals. So we have to keep an ordinance that's in line with what would. Continue to allow market rate developers to want to build. If a market rate developer can't make money, they're not gonna do the project. So then that's zero housing created.
Got it. Yeah, I get it.
I, I think the state required in the current housing element that the city review on a manual basis, the impact of the city's affordable housing. Ordinance on the creation of housing in general. Um, it's something that, you know, I don't know what we're doing, but, uh, it, it, it's, it's something that's, the state reviewers are looking at. Um, they want to make sure. And I don't think it's necessarily that Daly City is the, you know, the villain. There are some places that they'll, some cities, they'll, they'll come up with these draconian sort of requirements that nobody. And I think that's what they're trying to eliminate, that there's not ordinances that just prohibit, you know, or really get in the way of housing construction in general. So, anyway.
Because that, my concern is that the people that even live here, that, that can't afford, they're having a hard time even staying here. Or they're having to move out and I'm sure the rest of my colleagues know people in their neighborhoods or churches or what have you, schools, they can't afford. Like, you know, like they can't stay and how are we gonna make sure that our community doesn't feel like, like, um, you know, I know that people keep using that word. Gentrified or, or what have you, but since we are one of the most diverse. But since we are one of the most diverse cities that we're proud of, we want, we need to keep that together, so. I think skillfully, hopefully my, we can work together as a council to make sure that we start recognizing that balance. Because that's been a pretty bad balance and I've seen trucks pull up. As most people know where I live, the Westlake Apartments, and then people can't afford them, and these are children that go to our schools. So it's really kind of heartbreaking when you see these things happen. But, you know, but we have to figure out the balance and make sure that we can keep the people here. And as far as the parking element, I know that the top of the hill, when the senior housing was built, that senior project, that you can't have a car. So I think there's vacancies there still, aren't there, Michael? Because I've had seniors approach me, that one up the top of the hill, the, the one near OLPH, All Lady Perpetual.
I don't know how vacant did it. I, I have, I have no statistic on that, honestly. The reason why that's uh, the, the parking reductions for senior affordable housing are built right into the zoning ordinance and have been there for many years. Um, I think they got a seventy-five percent parking reduction right off the bat. So, but that's my code and that's been there since the early eighties, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so for me, the, the people are saying, well, I'm a senior, but I need a car. You know, they, yeah, right? Because they're, they want to go to Burry, Burry or someplace, you know, they feel restricted.
Yeah.
But I don't know, just a lot of thoughtfulness, I think that when we go forward and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity as a council to get together and have discussions at some point, so um, and see how we can do this. Like you said, in the law makes it tricky. I see how that you guys, you and Tatum have to try to work all around the numbers and stuff. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tatum. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's go ahead with Vice Mayor Rayba Ventura, and then we'll go back to Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, one, one thing that you said that struck a chord with me is the attention that you are giving to housing discrimination. And um, some of the groups that you're, you're working with, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that that is um, a topic that is uh, of concern. And so I, I, I hope you can move forward with keep, keeping uh, uh, that, that dialogue open and working with those groups. One thing that I wanted to make sure was that, you know, I remember talking to Elsa Ramos and her husband a long time ago. They've both since passed away. But they were telling me a story where they were, we had laws in the books that uh, prohibited them from buying a house because of their race uh, in Daly City. And I wanted to make, I never got the answer about whether or not we had those laws in our books. And I wanted to make sure we don't have such laws. And um, if there is, oh, if we do, let's get them off the books and let, let's uh, enact uh, uh, something to uh, revoke or, or um, rescind whatever laws that could have happened. Do you know anything about that?
There are no laws like that that I'm aware of on, in the Daly City municipal code. I think what you may be speaking of are private restrictions, and those have been present in Daly City. As a matter of fact, I think it's, there's a, there's a book that's um, in circulation that talks about this in the Bay Area. Is that it? Oh.
I don't know. Yeah.
I know specifically, there were some, um, there was language in, for example, the, the Westlake um, CCNRs back when the Westlake subdivisions were built. Um, all of that now is illegal by federal law, so it's all sort of um, trumped by that. Um, so in any sort of practices like that would be illegal, but there's certainly nothing in Daly City's ordinances that are um, that um, have that kind of language in it.
Okay, good. Um, and then the other uh, issue was that uh, we were supposed to have a parking town hall forum task force kind of situation. Because I, I do believe, Michael, what, what you're, in, when what you're talking about, which is the, the need to address whether or not we need to look at parking in a different way. Um, and um, and I think we, we need to, and, and I'm wondering if we can get that going as well and opening up that task force again, but, but, because we certainly can't do things unilaterally, we have to do it with the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things I've left off the, the last time around and uh, well, actually one item. And the other issue is to address what I've heard afterwards. Um, to uh, Tatum and Mr. Longhausen, have you uh, considered vacancy rates? Uh, Rina sounds great, but what about those places that go uninhabited? Or unrented? Have we thought about that?
If you're speaking about um, um, uh, landlords who keep their units vacant, I don't know that there's a statistic on that um, in Daly City anyway. Um, I know some information's been collected by the city and county of San Francisco, but um, I don't know that we've done that. We, we have a, we have a very low vacancy rate. But I don't know if it considers.
Staff is actually, I, with um, our uh, housing division, we've actually started looking into that. Specifically, we think the vacancy rate overall is about two, it's a total of five percent, but when you take out different factors of people moving from one place to the other and just sort of the overall like maintenance of the unit, it's looking like it's somewhere in the two to three percent, which is a pretty low. Um, one of the things that the council could consider and that staff's just sort of dipping our toe into it right now is looking at a uh, vacancy tax where um, landlords be, have to pay a tax for keeping their units vacant, so um, that's something that could be explored.
Thank you. You are one step ahead of me because that was gonna be the next portion that I was going to ask. When you say anywhere from two to five percent, how many units does that represent?
I don't have that number right offhand, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And uh, on the issue of parking, I just wanted to provide some information, top of the hill, where I believe the uh, project was only fifty-five parking spaces. Uh, Daly City has been, has done pretty well in regards to developments and uh, saying, okay, well, if you're going to develop, we need X number of parking spaces. However, I do know in San Francisco, for every four buildings that you build, you get one parking space. So uh, folks need to realize that we have it very well in Daly City because if you build a uh, say twenty-five hundred square feet uh, home, uh, we're saying you need four parking spots for one home. Uh, so uh, I, I think we're gonna have a difficult time in, in the area of parking because uh, people in Daly City and the community, they want their parking spaces, so uh, we're gonna, we're gonna thread uh, a double edged sword. So uh, just wanted to put that out there. And uh, you know, I've heard the term concrete jungle. And uh, the more we continue to build, uh, what's Daly City gonna be, uh, become? So housing is great, but at the same time, uh, we have to thread a fine balance uh, with all these other issues and that I am aware of. That's all I have. Thank you.
You.
Well, Michael, have a, oh, Stephen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that um, the mayor has talked to us about exploring a vacancy tax. So uh, we have staff looking into it. There is some data we need to collect, obviously for Daly City. Um, but it's something we're actively looking into and I just want to thank the mayor for um, giving us that direction last month.
Thank you so much, Stephen. Um, I have a one quick question for Michael. Um, just looking at that one slide with all the, the different cities in the county. Is there a reason why, like, other cities um, don't have larger numbers to build, like an Atherton or even a Colma? Is it because of space or um, is it based on? So I'm just trying to look at equity in terms of like, it feels like Daly City and Redwood City were kind of like bearing the brunt of a lot of the development. I'm like wondering why can we build in other places?
I think, I think one of the factors, so it's sort of like population begets population. So one of the factors in creating the numbers is what your population is and what the expected, you know, what the demand of that population would create. So that's why you'll see in general, the smaller cities have lower arenas because there's small, a smaller population creating a demand for housing. Another element to the equation is jobs as well. Um, so places like Atherton and Hillsborough don't have a lot of jobs, so they're not creating the demand for housing.
Thank you so much. All right, are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I guess um, we'll go ahead and move forward on to uh, public appearances and oral communications. Thank you, Michael. Thank you to staff for providing that very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, my bad. Vice Mayor Ray Ventura, you have additional comments?
No, I was just uh, I thought I saw a bunch of hands for public comment. I was curious if there was, yeah.
Mayor, we do have seven hands raised.
I got you, okay.
Now, so we could take public comment on this item.
Okay.
If it was.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Um, so for those members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item, um, please click the raise hand feature. And then for those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. And I will call your name. You will receive a request to unmute, unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. You will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. And when your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Any speakers that are not in compliance will be muted and any use of profanity will result in a speaker being muted immediately. So we have ten raised hands and the last called speaker will be we have eleven raised hands, the last called speaker will be a call-in user. Okay. Now just bear with me as I get the timer up and I will call the first speaker. Okay, the first speaker will be Nick Ochi Penti.
Hello. So when I saw this item on the agenda, one, I thought it was timely because of all of the controversy and um, obviously fast-tracking of housing developments. Um, we're seeing not just here in Daly City, but in other cities as well. And of course, um, as a trustee with the Jefferson Union High School District here and as uh, somebody who was born and raised out here in Daly City in this area. Um, of course, it was disturbing to see the Ceramone Del Rey project, which was um, approved for a preliminary plan. Um, even before um, and even before any kind of good faith collaboration could be had, um, the district, um, though I voted against it, um, went ahead to approve one hundred seventy thousand dollars. Again, that's one hundred seventy thousand dollars in um, funding for contracts for fencing, security and additional cameras, which they had prior, uh, they, they said they had, um, they didn't need to, they weren't trying to um, surveil the garden, but clearly they are. In an effort to essentially set up the garden for failure and to prevent, which they did today, prevent students from accessing the school facility, um, the garden, which by the city council's own direction and conditions was asked to work in good faith with the community. So, and already breaking with the, the agreement that was passed um, just two weeks ago by the city council, um, I want you to um, one, know about that, or just about a month ago. Um, I want you, one, to address that before moving forward with anything else with this project. Um, secondly, um, obviously, this project is flawed, over a thousand units in the density and all the issues we, the community has raised. Um, the youth, native community, um, who in fact have not been properly consulted, um, which has been noted by the community um, as, as myself. And in addition to all of that, looking at the Rina um, assessment, um, Association of Bay Area Governments, as late as December twenty twenty-one, just two months ago. As you presented.
Wrap up your comments.
Okay. The next speaker will be Sabrina Brennan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Um, I'm commenting on behalf of the Sierra Club. The city's current housing policies are reflected in the Jefferson Union High School District's proposal to build ninety percent market rate apartments on publicly owned land in Daly City. Today's market rate housing is unaffordable for most residents and families with children attending public schools. For this reason, please increase the city's low income housing requirement to an, to a minimum of thirty-three percent. Insufficient low income housing has resulted in the current housing crisis. And it is only through creating additional low income housing in perpetuity that we collectively reduce the cost of living in the Bay Area. Daly City residents suffer from a significant green space imbalance that cur, that results in negative health outcomes reported in, on the San Mateo County Health website. Please push back hard on Rina numbers that total four thousand eight hundred thirty-eight units, the largest number of units of any city in San Mateo County. The most recent San Mateo County Community Health Needs Assessment reported that the prevalence of asthma and diabetes increased significantly between nineteen ninety-eight and two, twenty thirteen. In only fifteen years, the asthma rate in San Mateo County jumped from eight percent to seventeen point nine percent and chronic lung disease increased from four, four point seven percent to seven point one percent. Poor air quality in Daly City disproportionately impacts children and people of color and county asthma death, uh, deaths rank above the state average. Diabetes, diabetes is also on the rise between nineteen ninety-eight and twenty thirteen. The county diabetes rate more than doubled from three point nine percent to ten percent. Diabetes disproportionately impacts people of color and low income families.
Please finish up your comments.
Thank you. Please direct your planning staff to correct unfair arena numbers that jeopardize public health and eliminate opportunities for increasing needed green space. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Deej Gold.
Hello. My name is Deej Gold. I'm a member of Pacifica Social Justice and I believe the inclusion of the various parcels listed at six ninety-nine Ceramonte on the Rina is not only a bad idea, but it violates the state and local laws. By placing this property on the Rina list, the city commits to creating a regulatory environment in which the private market could build unit types included in Rina. This includes the creation, adoption and implementation of the general plan policies, zoning requirements and or economic incentives to encourage the construction of various types of units. So essentially ties the city's hand to go ahead and approve this project. As we know, the plans for what is being called Ceramonte Del Rey Project involve both the destruction of the community garden and building of market rate housing that in quantity distribution and planned phases of construction violate the Daly City Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and state laws for affordable housing and the use of surplus lands. The staff report presented tonight did not address low income housing, which is part of the Rina requirement, and instead muddled it in the term affordable housing, which includes the moderate income housing, which is one hundred and twenty percent of, of area median income. Despite the staff reports acknowledging that the Ceramonte Del Rey Project does not meet the Daly City Affordable Housing, or I'm sorry, Inclusionary has, Housing Ordinance, this city council approved a resolution moving the project forward. It's time to stop this now. If the land is truly surplus, it must be returned to its rightful owners, the indigenous Ramatutshaloni people. We need to understand that turning a beautiful natural garden into a dump for construction materials is not in the interest of Daly City and including this project in the Rina list is an attempt to force the coun, the council's hands. And I want to thank for Daly City and the rest of the Daly City Community Garden Alliance for keeping on this issue and, and, and pushing this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next called speaker will be Victoria Becker. The next called speaker will be Victoria Becker.
My name is Tori Becker. I am a member of Pacifica Social Justice. I'm speaking against the inclusion of Ceramonte Del Rey Project in the RHNA. I am speaking against the Ceramonte Del Rey Project altogether. When I first heard about the SDR project, I was appalled that the school district was leasing public land to developers to build 1,200 market rate apartments that few people of Daly City would be able to live in. In the process, destroying an extraordinary garden, all for the purpose of profiting developers. Now my thinking has shifted. I now see this issue as an environmental issue, part of the climate emergency and a land issue. Ceramonte Del Rey should not be developed. Land should be left as green space. The only community garden in Daly City nourished and respected for the people of Daly City to use. The land should be restored to the Ramatosh Aloney people. Tell the school board to stop criminalizing the people who work and use the garden. Stop you, built, putting more security around the garden. Stop the Ceramonte Del Rey project. Save the only community garden in Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Ford DC.
Students, teachers and community members have been crying today because they were told they can't go into their garden. A security guard approved by the JUHSD was waiting for them outside of the garden today to not let them in. We have been on the ground doing a lot of outreach and research and the community wants the garden and to preserve community spaces. Y'all need to stop the district from doing this. We have not received a response from y'all. The DC Community Garden Alliance sent out a letter to you seven days ago and we have been calling on you to listen and save the garden. You all have expressed support for the garden before and have been silent lately because you want to meet your housing goal. Meanwhile, Daly City residents are being evicted like Midway and Ceremony Ridge, which are so-called affordable and unhoused community is growing. The lack of affordable housing is a systemic and policy issue. You're talking about opening back up recreational space. Meanwhile, one of the biggest recreational spaces, Ceremony Del Rey, is at risk of being demolished. Some facts, Daly City experiences one of the highest pollution burdens within the South County Cemetery and canopy is less than 5% of an area. As it gave way to the peninsula, two major highways blew air pollution into densely developed areas like Ceremony Del Rey, harming public health. But the district is trying to cut down thousands of trees with this development and telling gardeners to stop taking care of and planting trees. Trees filter air pollutants, including particulate matter. We need this, especially through a pandemic with airborne viruses, uh, viruses. Um, after heavy rainfalls during last flood, the only thing saving SDR from drowning was the garden. We need food and plant medicine sources like the garden. The list goes on. The proof goes on that we cannot afford by any means to get rid of our green spaces that already exist. Build your housing somewhere else. All the concerns you had last meeting have been taken care of. The garden has been managed safely by community for over 20 years. Rod and city council, we demand a meeting with indigenous community gardens, gardeners and the Daly City Community Garden Alliance. And for you all to support preserving the garden, we demand to be added to the agenda to present.
Please finish up your comments.
People's proposal. Listen, the district has not been working in good faith and has ignored the students. They have passed 170K in funding to instead police the garden, which should go to teacher funding. They claim the developments for, they left notice on the garden, which there's. Still no EIR report. There are negative and dangerous species.
Okay, the next called speaker will be Kalisha Webster.
Council members, my name is Kalisha Webster and I'm a housing advocate for people with developmental and other disabilities with housing choices. As part of the housing element update process, Daly City is required to analyze and plan for the housing needs of specific special needs populations, including people with developmental disabilities served by the Golden Gate Regional Center. Daly City is home to more than 400 adults with developmental disabilities, most of whom live at home with family or in an institutionalized setting, not by choice, but because of the lack of deeply affordable housing available. For person with a developmental disability, which can affect cognitive, behavioral and emotional functioning, the key to improving housing accessibility is supportive services. And because most people with developmental disabilities are on fixed incomes, they also require deeply affordable housing. Many other cities across San Mateo and Santa Clara County are addressing this housing need by requesting that developers of affordable housing include a preference for people with developmental disabilities in a certain number of units. A few land use policies the city should consider to meet RENA requirements and to create a more inclusive community are increasing base height and density throughout the city, which can make projects targeting deeper levels of affordability more financially feasible. Focusing the highest densities in transit-rich areas creates a more sustainable city and increases accessibility for transit-dependent populations, such as people with developmental disabilities. Establishing an affordable housing overlay zone to incentivize more 100% affordable housing developments, which target the deepest levels of affordability or includes that units set aside for special needs populations who would benefit from onsite supportive services. Prioritizing public land for public good, such as redeveloping public parking lots into affordable housing. Establishing a commercial linkage fee to increase the city's affordable housing funds, which can be a critical source of gap financing for projects targeting the deepest levels of affordability. And increasing the city's BMR requirements closer to that of other cities in the region that require 50 to 20% set aside and including a menu of alternative options, such as allowing a lower percent of set asides if deeper levels of affordability are targeted or units are set aside for special needs populations that require onsite supportive services, including but not limited to people with developmental and other disabilities for these services funded by the Golden Gate Regional Center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, uh, speaker will be Chaya.
Good evening, council. I would like to commend you for being engaged in this issue. I have a few comments for you. Why do you think it's, oops, I'm sorry. Um, okay, my first comment is the current plan has a lack of low and lower income housing and does not comply with the basic tenet of the California State Surplus Land Act, which was created to facilitate building more affordable homes on surplus local public land. The Daly City Inclusionary Housing Ordinance requires that affordable units are phased in as the same time as market rate units, but the majority of the project's affordable units would be provided on parcel C and constructed after construction of 313 market rate units on parcels A and B. Also, the ordinance requires that the affordable units be physically distributed equally throughout a development. This requirement is not being met by the current plan. And don't forget, affordable is not the same as low or lower income. And this is all defined in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Why do you think it's okay to violate the California State Surplus Land Act? Also, I'm curious to know, why do you think it's okay to violate the Daly City Inclusionary Housing Ordinance? If you're getting this advice from the city attorney, please note that these violations of local and state law are actionable. Is this the path you want to lead the city on? My final comment is please rethink what you're allowing to happen to the community garden. It's wrong. Listen to your constituents and your inner voices. Once the garden is destroyed and can't and won't ever be replaced and recreated, don't do this. Recognize the falsehoods put out by the JUHSD for what they are. Propaganda that's very biased towards many members of the community. Actually, the land still belongs to the Ramatush Aloney. The JUHSD is a public, not a private entity. It serves the community. It has exceeded its bounds. Your job is to not allow that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Kenneth Russell.
Good evening, council members. I wanted to comment this evening on the housing element. As the presenter mentioned, the RENA minimum number of housing units for Daly City for this housing element is 4,838 units. This compares to the previous cycle when Daly City's minimum was just 1,350. This means the plan for this cycle needs to be more than three and a half times as ambitious as it was last cycle. As the presenter mentioned, the preliminary list of sites only partially meets the city's RENA floor, leaving 1,102 units. And of course, that's assuming every one of them, uh, that's on the preliminary list works out. In considering places for these additional homes, I encourage staff and council to look to emphasize locations that allow for walkability and with close proximity to transit. One way to do this would be a policy of allowing more homes in the area surrounding the Daly City BART station. As someone who lives in walking distance to there, I'd love for more people to have that opportunity. Um, allowing more homes around transit is also a great way to create more homes without it becoming a concrete jungle, as one of the council members referenced previously. I would also encourage the council to consider things like an affordable housing overlay, as also mentioned by a previous speaker. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Heba.
Oh, hello. Uh, good evening, everyone. I am an active community member. I graduated from this school district, JUHSD, and I've lived here literally my whole life. Um, the first thing I wanted to focus on is what actually Gwen Sylvester said, how we literally live in a concrete jungle. I thought it was very ironic that no one had mentioned the garden after he had said that because that's literally why we are fighting so hard. Or one of the reasons we've been fighting so hard to preserve the community garden. Um, but anyways, um, I wanted to talk about our youth. Our youth have poured their hearts into making artwork to advocate for the preservation of our community garden. It's not really easy for them to attend school board meetings or city council meetings to have their voices heard. Their artwork is their voice and activism. JUHSD Board of Trustees recently passed a measure in which they approved spending up to 170,000 on 24-hour surveillance at the garden and attempted to suppress advocacy for the garden. And, um, one of their things for the surveillance that they passed, they were going to pay a security guard literally 24 hours, about 20K a month when that money could have been allocated for a teacher. So, you know, that's a red flag for me. But all this does is police our community and youth who visit the garden. It makes their one safe space unsafe. With a discriminatory and retaliatory surveillance of the garden comes rules that were proposed by the school district and approved by the board. One of the approved rules is to take down the signage not owned by the school district. In other words, their artwork made by our youth would be taken down by JUHSD. The reason I'm mentioning this is because multiple times you guys have said that you want to hear from community members. We have continuously been emailing you, um, trying to get you guys to have a meeting with us or just by attending your meetings. I can't believe I sat here for like two hours until I was finally able to public comment and you guys still are limiting us to two minutes per speaker. Um, anyways, not only has this development threatened our community, but its continued push for profit has deeply wounded us as well as suppressed the voices and needs of our youth. We have been continuously asking the school board to work with us, to work with our community as a collective in order to address everyone's needs.
Please finish up your comments.
Anyways, uh, we, the community, demand all hands off the garden, which includes helping all proposed closures and the development of security additions and the immediate removal of excess security measures. We demand that the city council has a meeting with us to discuss this development and takes a stance to preserve the garden. We demand a stop to the harassment, retaliation and surveillance of gardeners, youth and community members.
Please finish up your comments.
Okay, have a good night, whatever, bye.
The next, uh, speaker will be Jackie.
Hi, thanks for calling me. Um, first, I just want to say how incredibly rude it is, um, how every single person who's spoken has been interrupted. Every other meeting I've been on, there's been a timer. And also I know everybody who's spoken and I know that they're personally not incompetent. So they're very capable of telling when two minutes is and they're very aware that you only allow all of us two minutes to speak. So there's no reason to interrupt anybody and you won't need to be do that. You won't need to be doing that to me. You can just cut me off. Um, so first of all, I want to address, uh, the comment that was made earlier that y'all had no idea, um, how many empty housing units were in your city. Um, I've actually been doing some research on that. Your census says that you have about 32,000, um, households in your city. So if you're looking at two to 3% of them being, or sorry, two to 5% of them being empty, you're looking at a number anywhere between 600 and 1,600 units. Um, that's a lot. So y'all should definitely go find out where those units are and start housing people in them. Um, the $170,000 security guard that's sitting in front of the garden as we speak, instructing the students that they can't enter the garden that's on their school property. That's insane. Um, I'd like to break down that 170K and let you know that you could have given about 70 teachers a monthly stipend of $2,200, which is the average rent in your city. Um, you could have given like, I don't know, 1,700 teachers, $100 to buy supplies for their classrooms. Um, on top of it, this land is Ramatush Aloney land. Um, you all claimed you want to listen to your community. The community is here talking to you. There are over 4,200 signatures on a document right now that says that they do not want this project to go through. What we want is a real land acknowledgement. The JUSD owns this native land that is not theirs. It should absolutely be given back and shouldn't be touched without indigenous input.
The next speaker is a call in user. Please press star nine to unmute yourself.
All right, so this is the public and I think we already had this conversation in the past. The abundance of housing is there, so let's not do the, uh, building of more units. Let's not ruin the gardens. I think we've been through this. I'm in a very bad mood tonight and it's Valentine's Day, so I want to throw a big Valentine out to the community leaders, Jorge C. and many, many others on the call tonight. So let's get this straight. I'm the public. I pay the bills. That city hall is my city hall. Those seats that you sit in are my seats. Those salaries that are being paid out to the school district, that's my money. That is my land. I don't care what the school board trustees thinks they own. They only owe, they only own those box of Krispy Kreme donuts that they sit and climb up. Okay, secondly, I could say anything I want on the calls. So Ms. Zimmerman, get it straight. The First Amendment gives me the right, the one that our, our soldiers, our veterans fought for, gives me the right to say anything. Hopefully that's crystal clear. Okay, that's going to be coming at a later date. I can go to my city hall. I could go to my school that I pay for and that's not entitlement for the teachers. And God, we found a veteran, a so-called veteran who's portraying himself as a marine while soldiers are laid to rest in uniform at Golden Gate Cemetery at Snee Lane in San Bruno. How horrific is that? Then we find cousin it, cousin it is a teacher at the school. Cousin, it has something to say about me and about the leaders that I support and about the community I support. She won't say it to my face, but I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to reclaim my city hall. You guys are watching, fighters. You, wait, let me finish. Don't interrupt me. I'm the public. I'm paying the bills. Don't ever interrupt me.
Please finish up your.
And I understood, hey, I said, don't interrupt me.
Mayor, we have three additional hands raised after the last called speaker. Would you like to proceed?
Please.
The next call, the last called speaker will be Denny Asnis and the, the next called speaker will be, uh, Devante Jewett.
Hi, good evening. My name is Devante and I urge the city council to approve the Ceramonte Del Rey project, which includes, of course, our community garden. As echoed what the previous speakers have said, we need to preserve the garden and truly include the voices of indigenous community. Of course, we all know this is Ramatosh Aloney land. Youth, community members who address the city, a daily city housing crisis, which perpetuates gentrification. We need to discuss and keep our green spaces. And also previous speakers before mentioned pollution issues, right? And, uh, demolishing this garden is just going to perpetuate and make matters worse. So I want to hold the, I want to hold the city council members accountable to addressing these issues and also meet with the community members. As I said before, this is super important, really important. And for those who dedicate their lives to equity, inclusion and diversity and truly, um, practice anti-racism practices and policies, don't improve, don't improve this project. If you do, you'd be going against all of that. You'd also be going against all of the policies that were mentioned before. We truly need to create, um, affordable housing, right? That includes the majority of Daly City residents. Majority of Daly City residents aren't going to afford these units. We all know this. This, all, all this does is, uh, banffing developers. And that's not doing it a service to our residents. and that's not doing it a service to our residents, our community members, especially those who are vulnerable. So I urge city council to get, to not give in to the developers, and truly put the indigenous community and the rest of Daly City community first. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Glenn.
Hi, this is Glenn, a member of Malaya Movement San Francisco and for Daly City. I'm here in solidarity with the community members standing against the Jefferson School Board's efforts to criminalize those who advocate for the preservation of Daly City's only community garden. This is a complete violation of the remaining trust we had in the school board to work with us, the community, to develop an equitable plan that, one, respects our input, two, the thriving ecosystem that currently inhabits the garden, and, three, indigenous voices. Y'all may be our quote-unquote "city leaders," but if anyone should have the final word on anything around here, really, it's the natives. Mayor, I've seen you attend an action to support the organizing efforts of the Filipino community in San Francisco to defend human rights and indigenous sovereignty in the Philippines. You showed up for that, but you must respect the cause of natives out here, too. Otherwise, I can't help but think how performative your attendance to that action was, which would be extremely hypocritical. I'm sure that's clear as day to you. So are you going to stand by the people or just some people? Respect indigenous sovereignty everywhere. Save the garden and power to the Ramatushaloni people.
Thank you for your comments. The last speaker will be Danny.
Hi. Good evening. I'm speaking as an educator, retired teacher of over 20 years in San Francisco Unified School District, as well as a volunteer in the Pacifica Schools. And I understand the need of schools for additional funding and to increase educator wages. But the Ceremony Del Rey Project proposal and its potential destruction of the public garden space on the property is particularly awful in the way that it does not conform even with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance and other laws. I'm very upset today. I heard people speaking about how important that garden was to them, to their mental health, students, community members, many different kinds of people. Additionally disturbing is the fact that low-income housing, not just affordable housing, is not being included or even considered in the plan. New developments in Daly City need more than 10% of affordable quote-unquote "units." As an educator committed to justice for not only educators and school staff, but for the communities they serve, I strongly disagree with the J U H S D choice to support and push the Ceremony Del Rey project as it's written. As a union member of various unions over 30 years, I am also appalled that the teachers' union in this situation is siding with big developers and against the community, purportedly to serve teacher needs. Teachers' needs can never be served by going against the communities they serve and work in. We know that developers often don't meet their promises about even affordable housing in then cities, and the people living within them are left losing. But it's particularly wrong to fail to provide lower-income housing on some of the last remaining public land, which is actually Ramatushaloni land, as most people, as many people have cited, which could call into question the city's commitment to creating and providing economically, racially, and socially diverse housing. This is an issue that goes to people's hearts, their needs, what they need to live, and the students that need to be able to go there and to learn are what should be taken into account in this situation. Do not support this project.
Thank you for your comments. That was the end of public comment on this side of mayor.
Stephen, let's go ahead and move to the next agenda item, Public Appearances and Oral Communications. Stephen?
Okay. So for members of the public who wish to comment, you may click the raise hand feature. Or if you're calling in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. I will call, I will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will have the last verbal comment. You are allowed two minutes to speak, and you may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask you to wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted, and any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. Okay, mayor, it looks like we have six hands raised. The last called speaker will be Jackie. And the first called speaker will be Nick Ochi-Pinti. And for all speakers, you can refer to the countdown timer that is on display in the screen here.
Yeah, just to continue the comments that I was making earlier. Not only as a trustee, but as a teacher, as somebody, you know, from this city, like many people in our community. I'm not just concerned, but it's disturbing to see that there's been a lack of engagement with the community around these projects. One thing I want to also remind this city council and the community listening, and I want to acknowledge all the comments being made, also to echo that we should not be moving forward with any project Ceremony Del Rey unless we're rebuilding the district office there as it was originally planned. This housing project has been flawed from the start. And Westmore Park was a part of that project that was not clarified in any bond measure that was run in our community. I bring that up because our community was asked to vote on several bond measures, which were proposing to upgrade school facilities in the fine print. My other district colleagues on the board trustees are exploiting a loophole in that language to be able to start a real estate venture and build a very market-rate housing complex that was discussed earlier. To speak to that, one, for the presentation, the city, I would encourage to pass an ordinance that actually matches the Association of Bay Area Governments RENA goal minimum at 25.9% for very low. That should be a minimum that our city should be looking at. No major city in California is doing 10% affordable housing in the year 2022. So I would encourage, per what I heard earlier from other council members, to review that and immediately update the policy and step with best practices. Secondly, I've been voting against this measure because it's been flawed from the start. This is because we've been misspending school budget, misappropriating over $170,000. This is not something the city should be associated with. In addition, our youth are being locked out of their safe spaces, public parks, and our city's only community garden. Truth, this is being, the truth is, this is being fast-tracked behind closed doors. We cannot afford to leave our community behind in this process, these projects. We have to go back to the drawing board. Our schools are not for sale. Our city's not for sale. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Sabrina Brennan.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Sabrina Brennan. On Monday, February 7th, you received a letter from the Daly City Community Garden Alliance regarding Daly City's only community garden located at the site of the proposed Cerro Monte Del Rey project. On February 1, 2022, the Jefferson Union High School District Board of Trustees notified the community of their intent to close Daly City's only community garden. J U H S D plans to convert the garden and orchard into a construction dump and eventually build a 14-story tower over the dump. On February 1, 2022, J U H S D approved spending $170,000 for 24/7 security guards, morph fencing, and surveillance cameras to intimidate community gardeners. J U H S D staff presented misleading and inaccurate information to justify the expenditure. Please clarify if closure of the garden was the intent of Daly City council members when you approved a resolution on January 10, 2022, granting $2 billion of entitlements to J U H S D. Please let the school district know if closing Daly City's only community garden was not the intent of your January 2022 resolution. The garden is well-maintained by hard-working community members. We encourage J U H S D to become good stewards of the environment. In an era of devastating climate disaster, it's extremely reckless of the school district to destroy sequestered carbon to build a concrete jungle. Please oppose destroying Daly City's only community garden and protect the garden at its existing site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Ford D.C.
SDR development needs to be stopped. SDR has always been a recreational community space, and the development that J U H S D is proposing will demolish all of that. Not just the garden. The garden they claim they are including in the new housing won't even be accessible to anybody that doesn't live there. How can we trust and talk about a new garden when there's one already there? It's not a community garden. What they're saying is going to be included. We have one already. It's called the Mystic Garden. Rod and city council, we demand a meeting, again, with indigenous community gardeners and the Daly City Community Garden Alliance, for all of you to support preserving the garden. We demand to be added to the agenda to present and implement instead a people's proposal, which the community is working on with indigenous community and youth, includes the garden. Screw the developers. Listen to your community. We and the indigenous demand a real land acknowledgement. This land that J U H S D owns is native land, and it should be given back. It shouldn't be touched without indigenous input or approval. The district has not been working in good faith and has ignored working with the students, teachers, and the community. They have passed 170K in funding to instead police the garden, which should go to teacher funding that they claim the developments for. And out of nowhere, they left notice on the garden, which they are supposed to give four months advance. They say they're going to close it to take signs kids have made, and they are telling kids they can't go there. Just today, they told the kids that they can't go there. Still no EIR report. There is native endangered species in the garden. This is straight-up environmental racism. We can't afford closed-door decisions. Nothing for us without it. This is so shady. You need to step up and do your job. And like I said before, this will be your legacy, all of you. The community is watching. We've been watching. We know that there's elections. We know you guys like to elect yourselves. But the community has been watching that you guys are not for what you say you're about. I hope you know that. I hope that all those little fake performative things you do, people are seeing what your response is to this.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be a call-in user.
Yeah, it's the public again. So it's time for public comment. It's my comment, right? So I don't want to be interrupted. I don't want to hear anybody's words mine. So as it turns out, this Pamela Estes, a couple of weeks ago, she received a proclamation about human trafficking. Well, she's actually a fake. She works for the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, and the sheriff's department is corrupt. They're really, really corrupt. Also, the stolen dollar, I mentioned that. The board of trustees, we had, I recently listened in on and attended. Absolute disaster. So Bonta, I know Bonta's in Woodside, down Mountain Lines, but he's probably coming up this way. You guys are going to go through an audit, financial audit, and there's some, like, really sketchy stuff. Remember the veterans event that you guys had with the veterans? And the public was notified, so you guys are in trouble about that. What's Gonzo up to? How can Gonzo haven't cleared out? This piggy's still there. Kermit the Frog's still there. Layani, go get yourself a bag of Cheetos. Don't ever hang up on me. I could use any language that I wish. Zimmerman, Rosie, you got to get back to us. We got to talk about these lawsuits. We need to talk about the First Amendment. Perhaps people just don't understand. Personally, I know people that received the 173 on the LSAT, so I don't know if it's just a matter of comprehension or what's going on. Also, Sylvester, I gave you a directive. Your directive was to work on building the community center, the mental health clinic, because mental health, mental illness is rampant. So I gave you that directive. You haven't gotten back to us. Soon you're fired. Stephen Solte, you're fired as well. Pack it up, clear it out. You guys are done. I'm coming down there, collecting your resumes. Collecting your resignations, I should say. You need to send out your resumes. Also, Monty, you're out. I'm the new city man.
The next speaker will be Hiba. Oh, I'm sorry. I unmuted the, the next speaker will be Jackie, and then we'll get to Hiba.
Okay, hi again, everyone. So yeah, echoing the same sentiments that a lot of people are making, this Cerro Monte Del Rey project. I want to especially, again, stress, you all are talking about connecting with the community. The community is here. Yes, people are frustrated. Yes, people are angry. That is something you're going to have to kind of navigate a bit. But the community's here. They've been doing the research. All the research you're talking about, all the research, all the outreach you're talking about, Ford D.C. has been doing it. That's why there are 4,256 signatures on their petition already, and comments, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of comments. If you all want to know what the community thinks, all you have to do is go straight to those petitions and surveys, and you can find out that thousands of your residents absolutely oppose this project, and that many of the steps that have been taken to get to the point this project is at have not been sound. As Nick stated, there has been mishandling of funds. There is no EIR. There's no environmental report done yet, which is a huge problem. It makes sense that it hasn't been done, because as we all know here in California, endangered species are a huge deal. If there is one found in that garden, which we all know they're there, you will not be able to build there. So I suggest y'all get that done. Otherwise, we're going to do one independently. That's just a fact. Teachers that you are claiming to support, they had curriculum that involved this garden that they've now had to cancel, because today, a security guard that's getting paid rather than raising teacher salaries told them that they couldn't use it. And again, we need to go back to the processes. I've heard again and again and again that you all want to connect with the community. We have been asked again and again, well, what's our plan? We have a plan. Talk to us. We have a proposal for different areas where you can build these buildings. We have proposals for even the space that you're proposing to build it in. How do we work it? So if it's too hard for you-
The next, the last speaker will be Hiba.
Hey, everyone. It's me again. I bet you guys are sick of me always commenting. Well, imagine how sick I am of constantly having to come here. I genuinely wish I can hop on to these meetings and tell you guys you're doing amazing things, but I truly can't do that because you guys are not listening to your community that you claim to care so much about. As the previous speaker before me stated, Ford D.C. has been doing the work of community outreach. You were sent a survey about a month ago with a public comment and an attachment to the survey respondents, which a majority of them were youth who utilize the garden, and no response, no acknowledgement or anything. But anyways, a majority of the survey respondents indicated a need for both green and community spaces. Students that attend Westmore High School, as well as other community members, called for restoration of Westmore Park, which I guess everyone seems to be neglecting, but it is a part of this SDR development, and not the construction of a district office next to the school. A majority of respondents stated that this proposal is not an adequate response to the lack of funding for our schools, as well as stating that other school issues need to be addressed. We are still in the middle of conducting our survey, but I will attach the responses that we received at this point. So I can email you guys updates. I'm not sure if you actually read them. Are you guys able to send confirmations out to community members that you actually read their public comments? I feel like would be a great start. There is a clear lack of support within the community for this development in the midst of a global pandemic that is disproportionately affecting our lower-income communities. It is completely absurd and tone-deaf to even consider passing a development that is only required to be 10% affordable by law, with the majority being market-rate housing while systemic issues are not being addressed. Lack of affordable housing does not emerge from the lack of housing itself, but the lack of an equitable and just system. We will always support teachers and schools fighting for equity in a socially strangled, in a society strangled by capitalism, but we cannot support this development that is sacrificing the needs and demands of our community. This development only perpetuates capitalism, systemic racism, and suppression. Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you for your comments, and that concludes public comment, mayor.
I thank you, Stephen. Thank you for everybody's comments. We'll be in touch, hopefully. We'll be in touch, hopefully, okay? Next thing is any appointments, board commission, membership committee appointments? All right. Seeing for my colleagues, I don't see any, moving on. See here. Any council committee reports, council committee reports from January tenth to today? House Member Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just last week, I attended the Public Safety Committee as part of Cal Cities. I'm a member of that committee as a, a result of a presidential appointment by Peninsula Division. And this is my third term. What I want to put out to you all is some information of upcoming legislation that is gonna be coming down the pipe. And uh basically a request. So I have seven uh bills that I'm going to talk about. And uh we'll first start off with A B fifteen ninety-seven. This is a measure that will reinstate a provision of law repealed by Proposition forty-seven, that if a person has been convicted three or more times of petty theft, grand theft or other specified crimes, and subsequently convicted of petty theft, the person is subject to imprisonment in the county jail not exist, not exceeding one year or in county jail for eighteen months or two, or three years. The committee voted on this and we decided to take a watch position on this uh initiative. A B fifteen ninety-nine, a more, this measure would repeal the changes and additions made by Proposition forty-seven, except those related to reducing the penalty for possession of concentrated cannabis. The committee voted to support this measure. A B sixteen oh three. This measure would amend Proposition forty-seven by reducing the threshold amount for petty theft and shoplifting from nine fifty, nine hundred and fifty dollars down to four hundred dollars. The committee decided to take a watch position on this matter. Now I'm gonna talk about four bills pertaining to catalytic theft issues. This measure would require a licensed smog check station to post a sign informing customers about strategies for deterring catalytic converter theft, including the etching of identifying information on the catalytic converter, which would authorize station to offer etching as an optional service. We have not made a decision on this and this is still pending, but this bill will be coming down pretty soon. A B sixteen fifty-three, this measure would specify theft of vehicle parts and accessories as property crime for consideration by the Regional Property Crimes Task Force. This is also pending. Two more, A B seventeen forty, this measure would require a core recycler to maintain a written record of the year, make and model the vehicle for which the catalytic converter was removed. And lastly, S B nine one nine, this measure would prohibit a dealer or retail seller from selling a motor vehicle equipped with a catalytic converter unless it has been engraved, etched or otherwise permanently marked with the vehicle identification number of the vehicle to which it is attached. So you can see these are important bills that are coming down the pipe uh to address retail theft and catalytic converter theft. I'm happy to report that Governor Newsom has recently passed a two hundred and eighty-six billion dollars in a proposed budget. Basically, two hundred and eighty-five million over three years to address the following. And I'm only gonna pick, there's about ten bullet points here, but I'm gonna pick out important ones that we should know as council and uh the um an incentive for Daly City. Eighty-five million annually through twenty twenty-four and twenty-five in competitive grants for local law enforcement to combat organized retail crime. Ten million dollars annually through twenty to twenty-five, twenty-four to twenty-five for competitive grants to local district attorneys to create retail theft prosecution teams. Six million dollars annually and five hundred thousand ongoing to the California Department of Justice to support regional task forces in combating organized retail theft and prosecuting them. And there's two others, but I, I guess you get the drift. So the reason why I'm providing this information to um my colleagues here is I would like to make a recommendation that Daly City prepares for this legislation, whether it comes down the pipe or not, but to take a proactive effort to create a task force to consist of the police department, economic development, retail stores, and uh start creating and reaching out to automobile shops who service vehicles to offer etching service. I've heard uh that other cities, they've, uh, their police department has provided a sticker that you can place onto the catalytic converter. And uh some shops have offered free etching, whether it can be the last four of your social security number or any serial number that you desire. I would like to get the public involved, who wants to be involved. It is my understanding that UPS and FedEx also provides free investigative services for the stealing of packages. They can give you a bait box to put out and if it's stolen, it's tracked. Retail stores can uh obtain GPS devices that they can put into clothing. Uh, the clerks would know particular clothing items and can remove those devices. But in case of a smashing grab where they take a whole bunch of clothing, uh, some police departments have provided those sensors. And we can utilize the uh asset forfeiture um of, that's available to our police department so that we can offer this to retail stores. So I would hope to, that uh we can agendize this item to create a task force. And I'm looking for ideas as to who also to include into the task force so that we can obtain all the resources possible. And if and when grants come down from the state of California, we can say, this is what we're doing now and there'll be a way to um perhaps maybe even be reimbursed or to increase our efforts. So that's all I have at this time, but uh again, I would like this matter to be agendized, to create a task force that we can be prepared for the future and to address retail thefts and catalytic converter thefts, what seems to be on the rise. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, are there any other um council committee reports? Okay, I'll just go ahead and um add a couple. Um, I attended the P C E meeting on January twenty-seventh, Peninsula Clean Energy. Um, they're right now in the search for a new CFO. Also, some other highlights that um that were talked about is looking at the P C E load. Um, comparing it now to a year ago and two years ago. And they saw that there's still a five percent decrease in PC load that's been used. Um, also, uh, I think one thing that is, that I want to highlight is there's also um, we approved um extension of a program and three hundred thousand dollars for e-bikes. So it's been electronic bikes that have been pretty successful in the city and throughout the county. And to get more people um onto electronic uh bikes and also electronic vehicles. And this program has been quite successful. Um, also, I attended the Council of Cities on January twenty-eighth. And, and during this meeting, they um talked about the, the new San Mateo County Express Lanes. So everything from new uh transponders, so you could switch in and out. If you want to do like three people in a carpool. And if you do so, you have to, if you have an old transponder, you have to get a new one. Uh, you would have to go to the Bay Area um Express Lane website to see how you can do that exchange. Um, so we're gonna have express lanes now that'll be coming down um the one-on-one, yeah. All right, um, anybody else? Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and Councilmember Pam Di Giovanni will follow up, so.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I just want to concur on some of the issues that you brought up. Number one for P C E, hopefully we contain a uh decision on what their thought on the new solar. Uh, hopefully that's coming down the pipe. And I concur with the new transit lane, if I'm not mistaken, it will go from ninety-two all the way down to Santa Clara. And they thought about equity for some of the low income. And uh there's a mechanism involved, they can go through, uh, I believe it's um, it's something house. Uh, charitable house or the name escapes me right now, but they can apply and they can get those transponders with uh a few credits already on it. So uh good things are happening and uh thank you for your report, it's very uh relevant and informative, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, uh, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Councilmember Pam Di Giovanni, you are unmuted, you need to uh put your mic on.
I appreciate your, your kindness. Um, I want to expand on the one-on-one expressway where we did the ribbon cutting for the C C A, which is the City Council of Governments. And uh Marie Schwang was the chair. She attended with Mayor Rico Medina, Assembly Member Pro Tim, Kevin Mullin, who actually had the legislation written, I believe in two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen, that actually um brought this forth to where it is today. And it began this week and it so far looks successful and they do have, which I did like, and their, their main focus was equity. Because when it first started, everybody was really concerned about the affordability aspects and the people that live by these areas. And I think that they're really trying to work on that and stay focused on that particular end. And then I also have on the S F O round table, I have some um uh news that we approved for the very first time, it's legislation for Congresswoman Jackie Speer. She's been working on this for Ms. Wentworth for, in the committee for a numerous number of years that actually is called night hush. At this time, it'll give extended hours of quiet in our neighborhoods for the flights that leave and fly over, especially the, the uh border of our Daly City, San Francisco, East Palo Alto, and many others that have lost sleep at night will now be able to get rest. So it's a change of the flight patterns and um one part of it begins at the, it's phase one and phase two. It'll take about another year or so before it's phased in. But this is a big win for legislation because no other time has this been done. And it's pretty fitting that Congresswoman Speer has been pushing this into this past uh the other night unanimously with our S F O round table. So thank you, thank you very much, good things are happening in that manner. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, okay, so we're almost getting there, um, any city council reports? Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, on the tail end of your report, I want to say thank you for updating us on those um rebates. You know, I think one thing that is so important is that last mile that happens from probably buses or from Daly City Bart. And so having um the electronic bikes is, is, is huge for community members and to be able to have that access. Um, and also, I mean, obviously, up that hill, towards top of the hill is uphill. So the electric bike aspect of that is, is helpful. So thank you for your leadership and being so consistent on the P C. Um, on the city council report, you know, I think that I just wanted to um say happy Lunar New Year to each and every one of you. Um, you know, it is um been such a trying year already in twenty twenty-two, but um as we look ahead towards the new year, um, I know that there's amazing work uh to be done. Um, and really um to spread the uh good health and, and fortune and um ahead. So I also wanted to um state that um hopefully I know as uh we progress in um finding out whether or not we'll stay virtual or in person. I know now that I, I've noticed that, that staff is looking at hybrid events. And um it's a really good sign around how um hopefully we, we have um you know, we're, we're, we're moving past Omicron in that, in that respect. Um, and so I look forward to um the work that staff has um in ensuring that there's access virtually and also for those that do feel uh comfortable. Um, you know, because they're vaccinated, boosted and, and uh want to be in person, that we have those events there, so. So um that's what I uh wanted to um just greet everyone out there and just um want to say uh happy Lunar New Year.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, are there any other uh city council reports? Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yeah, I just want to bring to the attention, which is something that people already know, the supply uh issue in the chain that COVID has caused, uh, caused inequity in our, in our own community. One being when people go try to buy products, so be it as, I mean, I'm not, shouldn't use myself as an example, but broken phone for six days, then you go try to buy it, then you have to order it. And even if you're looking for a two hundred dollar phone and making payment plans, that all these inequitable things in our system that we need to look at systemically. And yes, there were lovely celebrations of the Lunar New Year. Ceremony Mall had a huge one as well on Saturday and they did a fantastic, they always do a great job as well for the year of the tiger. And um we all, in the last, yeah, since the last time we met, I think we had the Holocaust Remembrance Day. And many things that we don't meet right at the particular time for those to remember that as well. And that Jews only consist of two percent of the population when you talk about um when people that are in minorities, what really has existed in resilience. So we all remember that, to love one another and respect one another, so thank you, Mayor, appreciate it, thank you.
Um, I had one more thing, oh, I had the, the privilege to guest speak for the Youth Civic Empowerment Program. That is a partnership with uh Daly City Youth Health Center and working with Mary Bear and Youth Leadership Institute. Um, one of the highlights is just, you know, talking about um my own narrative in terms of how I got involved, in terms of my own um political activism as a youth to now. And then um, you know, just thinking about, you know, I graduated like high school, like over like twenty-five years ago and just kind of seeing where the world is at today. And I asked them like, what do you see the world in twenty-five years? Because they'll go by very quick. Um, you know, things have changed incrementally, things have gone by fast, but you know, things have always, there's still issues out there that we're still fighting for, so um I just want to give a quick shout out to all the youth that were part of that program and also the um leaders and organizers that put that thing together to mentor those youth participants. Um, so. So that's for city council reports. Are there any staff reports?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll go back to Councilmember Justin Manalo. Thank you, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a city, one last city council report. Usually I have it on the list. I don't have it today, just came to mind, but I was able to speak to a representative from F Bank, the Filipino Bar Association of Northern California. And just, you know, their partnership in really supporting small businesses. And so they are looking at ways to partner with the city of Daly City to be able to provide, whether it's a legal clinic day to support small businesses or also be able to provide kind of the legalities around if they wanted to start a business. So I think that's something that maybe with the Small Business Commission, they can maybe partner there. But I wanted to share with you, Mr. Mayor and Council, that that conversation has started. And it's really to be able to provide resources for our small business community in Daly City. So thank you.
Great news. Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Now heading on to adjournments, we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With great sadness, many of you already know that there was a Stockton Fire Captain who lost his life while fighting a fire in a dumpster that he was putting the fire out and he got shot at the time. So these just bears to witness the many things that not just that firefighter, for the Stockton firefighters, for the loss, heartfelt condolences into our Daly City firefighters who took this one, they take them all hard, but this one was really hard because the unfortunate circumstances to die from a bullet wound as a firefighter or fighting a fire is quite unfortunate and for his family. And I didn't see it on the list, but I wanted to close in memory, I got a notice from one of the neighborhood members that Ms. Sylvia Lynch lost her longtime resident, lost her beloved husband recently. And so we need to send them heartfelt condolences. And I'll be giving the address to the mayor so that he can send a letter of condolences, which would be much appreciated by the family at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. This with sadness, I have to report, you know, everybody's considered a loved one. And, you know, when they leave this time, you know, family members really bear the brunt. I'd like to close in memory of Mrs. Anne Griffith. She was the wife of a former colleague and coworker of mine with the police department. Actually, I worked with her husband. But again, a family member is so crucial and just wanted to provide that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the adjournment in memory is for our dear neighbor since 1988, Violet Yip. Violet Yip moved to Daly City from San Francisco in 1961, becoming the first Asian American to move onto her block on Yantek Avenue with her husband of 47 years, Leonard, near what is now called Daly City Bart Station. She was born on May 24th, 1924 in San Francisco, where she grew up in the city's Chinatown and attended St. Mary's Chinese Catholic Mission. Her friendly demeanor, her generous heart, and her unconditional love for family and friends won her neighbors over, and the family quickly became part of the neighborhood. She hosted dinners in the family's Chinatown apartment every Sunday, and everyone was welcome. She was the oldest in the family of seven children, which included two Hall of Fame athletes and a veteran of the Battle of Iwo Jima. She took on the role of matriarch after her mother died in 1981, and she kept her brothers and sisters in line. She attended Central High School in San Francisco. She would later meet Leonard, and they married in 1956. She loved the Chinese opera and playing mahjong. She joined a Chinese music club where she made lifelong friends. She had a long career with Bank of America, raised two sons, and toward the end of her life cared for Leonard, who would die of Alzheimer's in 2004. She is most proud of her three grandchildren who she spoiled. She died of Alzheimer's on January 30th, 2022, and she was 97 years old. Also, the grandmother of Edward Johnson, a close family friend of Ellen I. An adjournment of memoriam for Clara Gadwang Abungon, who passed on January 24, 2022, just short of her 108th birthday.
And I have a couple more to adjourn in memory. One is Charles or Charlie Gitron. He was a former DCPD officer, offered Gitron, retired in 2004, following 25 years with the Daly City Police Department. And also Dominga Aguilar, with Grace Dumandan, DCPD record, police record clerk sister-in-law. So with all those in memory, I would like to have a moment of silence. Meeting adjourned. We'll see you again next time. Everybody have a good rest of Valentine's Day, Valentine's night, and we'll see you again next time. Good night, everyone.